...community on in no particular order. First off, this is National Recovery Month and the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition is in full force in dedicating and planning a number of different activities for around the Wilmington community. Donation Drive is taking place throughout the month of September to benefit children and teens. And also coming up very quickly on September 17th at 7:00 at the Town Common is what will be the third annual candle light, I'm sorry vigil for Night of Healing and Hope. And I look forward to the opportunity to attend that event as I do know others do in the community. It's certainly one of the community events that I've heard an awful lot about along with the work of the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition. So there's a flyer that's available and I believe we have, not certain, but I think we have a link off of our website, but I certainly know the town of Wilmington does as well. The WEF Wilmington Education Foundation had their first board meeting yesterday and in my absence Assistant Superintendent Regan was there attending that meeting. I had the opportunity to meet with the leadership of the board and I'm happy to say that we are going to again this year move ahead with what I've come to learn is the biggest fundraiser effort for the Wilmington Education Foundation and that's the WOC that will again this year take place late October on October 31st. So more information will be coming up very soon for that. Along a similar line of trying to establish and rekindle some partnerships with outside our community agencies, the Business Partnership is one that also Dr. Regan and I have had the pleasure to meet with and more information will be forthcoming very soon for a program that they are going to shift from what I understand was the Wilmington Library, but because of its success and growth, the Girls That Code Program will be now taking place and meeting at the Wilmington Middle School. So more information to come on that, but that's certainly a great news story for the growth and demand that's there for that program. And finally, if I may, I'll take the opportunity to provide a plug for what will be the first of a couple of four actually, community meetings as I continue my journey of listening and learning and getting to understand what's on the people's minds throughout the community. Wilburn Street School on October 1st at 9:30 in the morning and Wilmington High School, October 3rd at 6:30 in the evening. Both of those are community meetings, open to anyone to attend and certainly look forward to the opportunity to meet members of our community and hope that you'll consider coming out on one of those two dates. There'll be additional dates a little bit later in October. And that's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. Moving right along, under old business, I'm going to make a note to say this might sound a little bit like Groundhog Day. Somebody might be scratching their head a little bit when they're looking at homework policy again, but upon careful review of our minutes and watching the video from our last meeting, it appears that despite what we thought we did, we actually voted to approve the second reading of the homework policy, but we did not actually adopt the policy. So we need to do that this evening. So I would ask for a motion to adopt and approve the policy IKB, which is the homework policy. Motion.
I love that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bjork. Seconded by Mrs. Bryson. Thank you, all those in favor. There we go. Thank you very much. That's unanimous. Okay, moving on to new business. We've got an exciting thing that we do every time this time of year and that's the introduction of our new staff.
We do and thank you. And I have to say, I think this is just a tremendous thing that the district here does and that's take this opportunity to acknowledge in a more formal way for the community, those that have chosen Wilmington Public Schools to join. We know, I know well, that there are lots of choices within this area for school systems and it's a tremendous thing to have every year new folks join our ranks in a variety of different roles. And so as I've come to learn, what has become somewhat customary, the opportunity to introduce those who are new to WPS. We have many of them who are here tonight in attendance and what we will do, if you'll bear with us, is to go through school by school and allow the principal or director there to respectfully introduce those that were able to be in attendance tonight and also acknowledge those that perhaps were not able to be. In the school committee packet, you will see a list as of, I guess, just a few days ago of all of those staff that are new to Wilmington. And so we'll start and I'll follow the order that is outlined on that item, starting with the Wildwood Early Childhood Center and Ms. Charlotte King.
Is this one okay? So we have one new staff here with us tonight. It's Mr. Connor Bailey as a new ed assistant at the Wildwood. He is a Wilmington graduate. Many of you probably recognize him, but he is working in our kindergarten as an ed assistant. We have one teacher that wasn't able to be here, a new kindergarten teacher, Laura McDonough, who was an ed assistant at the Wildwood for a couple of years and now is in a new role as a kindergarten teacher. And then two late hires who didn't even make the list, Jessica Talbot and Emily Widline, who are also new ed assistants.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. At the Boutwell Early Childhood Center, Kristen Walsh, the director.
I'd like to welcome Mrs. Katie Michaud. She is an educational assistant that is shared between the Boutwell and the Wildwood Early Childhood Centers. She is also a former parent and so you will probably see her on the weekends on the soccer fields. So I'd like to welcome Katie to our team. Thank you.
Moving on to the Shawshine and Principal Lisa King.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Stacy Mealan. So Stacy subbed for us within the district last year as a special education teacher and we were able to hire her this year as our new language-based teacher at the Shawshine. I also have Ryan Cunningham, who's not here this evening. He worked as an aide in Lexington in an ABA classroom and he is now our new pathways teacher. Also Lauren Cameron, who subbed for us for a full year in third grade, is now our new second grade teacher. And Robin Clayton, who was our general tutor for two years, is now our new special education teacher. So welcome aboard, everyone.
Moving on to Wilburn and Principal Jeff Straznick.
Good evening. We have six new staff. We were able to come with us tonight, which was great. So we have Taylor Perella. Taylor is an ed assistant. Previously she worked in Reading as a school psychologist intern. She's also a former Wilmington Public School student, so welcome back. We have Stephanie O'Rourke. Stephanie is another educational assistant. Prior to coming here, Stephanie was a lead teacher for the SEAM Collaborative, so welcome to Stephanie. And lastly, but not least, Lindsay Giorgorio. She last year was a full-year substitute teacher in first grade and we were able to hire her for good now as first grade teacher. And not with us tonight, that couldn't make it. Bridgette Davis is our new school nurse. Erin Bruegger is a new educational assistant. And just starting this past Monday is Deidre Kilcullen, who is our new reading specialist. Thank you.
At the West, Principal Dennis Shaw.
We have two new staff members at the West this year. First is Joanna McGuire. She is a special education teacher in the language-based program. Joanna actually started last year in December, but she missed this event, so she graciously said, "Of course I'm gonna come tonight." So welcome Joanna. We have Avery Woodbury, who is an educational assistant in the new extension of the Steppingstones Program, which is in the Boutwell in the Shawshine. It's now moved up to the West. So that's a new program and Avery is actually a Wilmington High School graduate. So we welcome them all to board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. At the North, Principal Christine McRaven.
At the North, we actually have one new staff member. She was unable to be here this evening last minute due to car trouble. Kristen Dunlap is our new general music teacher. We actually share her with the Wildwood one day a week, but she's with us four days a week. She is a graduate of Gordon College, great, strong music program, and she has done some long-term subbing in both Chelmsford and Wakefield and she's actually already put on a concert, which we're already planning our December concert, so she's ready.
Thank you. At the Middle School, interim principal, Mr. Kevin Welch.
Good evening. Unfortunately, none of our staff was able to attend tonight, but I would love to welcome to Wilmington Hannah LaViolette. She is a special education teacher. Sabrina Paveo, who is a school psychologist. Emily Stebbins, school resource officer. Christina Tarantino, who is a seventh-grade ELA teacher. Christine Angaro, an educational assistant. Lisa Wilson, who is working as a security monitor. Virginia Keim, who is a school psychologist. Anthony DiFabio, who is a special education teacher. And a very late hire who did not make the packet, Michelle Hughes, who is a special education teacher as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. At the High School, Principal Linda Peters.
Good evening, everybody. We have four new staff members, none of whom could make it tonight. Allison Hogan has been hired as an educational assistant in our building in our inclusion setting. Tim McCarthy is filling our one-year guidance counselor position. He is a graduate of Wilmington High School and completed his practicum with us last year. Melissa Murphy comes to us from Valley Transitional High School to work in our language-based classroom. And Matt Rogalski is working in our social-emotional program. Started his career as an English teacher in New York and most recently as a special education teacher in Acton at the Victor School. We welcome them all and all of you to Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. And finally, at the district, we do have a few new hires, some of which are around this table. Dr. Regan, myself, Ms. Andrea Stern Armstrong, who was unable to be here, is our Director of Human Resources. But who is here is Ms. Megan Jones, our district IT support technician, and we welcome Megan to Wilmington, as we do for all of the folks. So thank you for all of our principals and our early childhood directors and for all of those that had the opportunity to attend this evening, thank you. Welcome to Wilmington. I've said this before, with our new teacher orientation and every single day holds true. This is a fantastic place to be. The enthusiasm and the spirit that's alive here is great and I hope you've discovered that already and we wish you a successful year ahead. So thank you.
Thank you and welcome to Wilmington. You are certainly welcome to stay and observe the rest of our school committee meeting. You're also more than welcome to go home to your families if you'd like. It's certainly okay either way. If you choose to leave, feel free to take some treats. Those were provided for you and for us, and yes, they're healthy, by Mary Palin, our Director of Food Services. And I also want to say thank you to Ms. Peters for the little treats that were left for the school committee members. So thank you very much. All right. Our next item of business is something I'm pretty excited about. If you've been paying attention, we have been involved in negotiations with our school nurses over their contract. And we had Mrs. Bryson and Mrs. Burns serve on the negotiating committee on behalf of the full school committee. Thank you for your work and your efforts on our behalf. The nurses have ratified their contract and we met to discuss it on our end as well. And we are at the point where we're ready to take a vote to accept that contract. This requires a motion to approve the negotiation contract between the Wilmington School Committee and the Massachusetts Nursing Association dated September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2021. Can I have a motion for that, please? Thank you, Mrs. Bryson. Seconded, Mrs. Burns. Thank you. And this requires a roll call vote. Mr. Bjork.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryson.
Yes.
Mrs. Burns.
Yes.
Mrs. Newhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Ragstale.
Yes.
Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
And Mrs. Broussard.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is a fall athletic update and I believe Mr. Alberts will be providing a presentation to us.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. As Mr. Alberts gets settled in your packet this evening and for those members of the community who will have perhaps the interest to take a look at this, there is a fairly extensive presentation that Mr. Alberts is going to walk through this evening. It contains a lot of different information relative to the athletic program here in the district. And ultimately, what's given rise to this, we will talk about in short order later in the presentation, around an opportunity that has come before the district for consideration. And so Tim will speak a little bit more to that later in the presentation and certainly plenty of opportunity for questions along the way. So with that.
I could just jump in one second. There's quite a bit of information here, I will say, and thank you for providing this level of detail. It's probably the most level of detail I've seen on our athletic program in about six years. So I think just for efficiency, maybe we can allow you to go through your presentation if the committee also agrees with me. Maybe hold your questions and comments till he gets through the presentation and then we can refer back if that is agreeable, just for efficiency's sake. Okay, thanks.
So just wanted to kind of give everyone kind of a high-level view of the athletic department. You know, we have 25 varsity programs, including recreational skiing. We have 50 teams throughout those 26 sports, including many at the freshman level. Proud to say we offer freshman level for every sport this fall, which is outstanding. Only half the Middle Sex League offers a full freshman component for this fall, so certainly something to be really proud of. In terms of our enrollment, we are the 11th smallest in the Middle Sex League out of 12 teams. So certainly, you know, we are the small fish in the big pond, if you will, but we have a very full component of offerings. The only MIA sports that we don't offer are skiing, rugby, boys volleyball, gymnastics, and swim, which I'll touch upon. History of the athletic department, we've been in three different conferences over the years. We were in the Merrimack Valley Conference originally and we were the second smallest school based on high school enrollment, the Merrimack Valley Conference. Shifted to the Cape Ann League in the early 90s, 1993. We were the second-largest high school in the Cape Ann League based on enrollment, but certainly geographically, you know, traveling to Rockport and Manchester Essex, you know, wasn't in the best interest of the school district. We entered the Middle Sex League six years ago and it's been a great conference, a lot of great schools nearby, but we are the second smallest. Only Stonemont High School is smaller than Wilmington High School in the Middle Sex League. In terms of sports added, pretty consistent with every high school pretty much in the area. Boys and girls lacrosse were added about 10 years ago and I'll touch more into that, how that process happened. But pretty much that's the only Middle Sex League sport that's been added. Lacrosse is the fastest-growing sport in the country, so a lot of schools have picked up most recently. Last sport dropped was gymnastics in early 2002 due to low enrollment and also success. They had 30 straight league losses as a gymnastics program. Middle-level waivers. What middle-level waivers are, is if we have programs that need a little extra help in sustaining the numbers, we apply, once we get approval from school committee, superintendent, high school principal, middle school principal, we apply, first we apply through our league, the Middle Sex League, and then we apply through the MIA. So what the middle-level waivers allow us to do is to field teams that are struggling a little bit. So most recently, we've had middle school waivers for girls cross-country. In the fall of 2017, we had six students participate in that. Fall of 2017, we also had three boys participate on the high school cross-country team. Girls ice hockey, pretty much throughout the Commonwealth relies on either co-ops or middle school waivers to sustain a program. We had one eighth-grade girl participate on the high school team last year. And every school in the Freedom Division of the Middle Sex League relied on that middle-level waiver to field a varsity team. Spring 2018, we had 10 girls help out with our softball team on the freshman level. And boys tennis, we had five students help out on the varsity level. And then this fall, we have girls cross-country of one student participating. History of cooperative teams. Cooperative team is when two high school communities combine together to field a team. So we have a history of having a cooperative team in girls ice hockey. We were a co-op team with North Reading High School about 10 years ago due to numbers. And most proud of, no user fees. Highlight that. It's amazing the offering we have without user fees. In the Middle Sex League, only Burlington and Wilburn also don't have Middle Sex League or don't have user fees, so we're able to offer a very full athletic program without user fees to the family, which is fantastic. As I alluded to, boys and girls lacrosse were added 10 years ago. The town had a youth program in place, which certainly helped. Wilmington Youth Lacrosse paid for the coaches, the uniforms, and the buses to help start that high school program. And we had a facility right in place, Alumni Stadium right out back. Basically, we just had to buy two lacrosse nets and we're ready to go. We had a nice turf field for practice and for games. I listed all the participation numbers over the last three years that I had data for. I'll highlight just a few. 2017 girls cross-country, you can see the number, we only had seven girls. So having that middle-level waiver really helped kind of generate a little interest into the program, where it jumped up to 14 this year, or last fall, excuse me. And this year, the number's even higher than last year, which is great. Winter participation numbers. The only one we use a little middle-level waiver for was girls ice hockey. You can see we're pretty much at capacity for all of these sports, which is great. It should be noted, there are no-cut sports. We offer, everyone who wants to participate in boys and girls cross-country in the fall has a spot on the team. Everyone who wants to participate in football has a spot on the team. In the winter, boys indoor track, girls indoor track, we can accommodate everyone, as many uniforms as we have. If there's a student that wants to join a team at Wilmington High School, we can give them that opportunity. And in the spring, also boys outdoor track, girls outdoor track, we can accommodate as many students that we have uniforms for. And the coaches do a really good job. Over the last, since I've been here, the last two years, we've had minimal cuts in certain sports, less than a handful. And what we always recommend to the coaches is to recommend that those students try to join cross-country, try to join indoor track, try to join spring track, to give them an opportunity to participate on the high school team. The teams that we've had a little struggle with, we had softball two years ago. We only had 25 girls in the program. We had that middle-level waiver for JV softball, which also helped us to add a freshman team. So now the numbers kind of bulked right back up to 35. And the varsity program is a very strong team. They consistently make the tournament. Just with the addition of girls lacrosse, you know, I think softball has taken a hit, not just at Wilmington, but throughout pretty much the whole country. But that middle-level waiver really helped us to give those girls a chance to play on the freshman team, which I value as just as important as the varsity teams. Coming into the high school, the kids are going to do better academically if they're involved in a club or activity or a sport. And certainly behavior-wise, if they're accountable and on a team, they're going to do well. So, you know, having that middle-level waiver helped give those freshmen the opportunity to play on a freshman team, because if we didn't have the waiver, we wouldn't be able to offer the team and then they wouldn't be playing softball. So that really helped. A few considerations to adding what I call a hosted program. That is a program where we are the only school involved and we house it in our own budget. You know, one, you have to have a sense of interest. There has to be significant demand in that sport to add it. Certainly, if one person comes up to me looking to add a sport, you know, certainly I'm not going to jump and try to add it immediately. I want to gauge the interest throughout the whole high school. Secondly, is facility availability. You want to have guaranteed long-term availability to house that new sport that you're considering. Capacity constraints, just being mindful of the current offering. You know, we are a small school, so you certainly don't want to oversaturate the athletic department and lose that lack of competition and dwindle the numbers on the teams. So certainly keeping in mind the capacity constraints when adding a program is very important. And obviously the costs, operational costs of adding a program. So recent program considerations, since I've been here, I've had interest shown from families in adding a swim program and also had inquiries from families adding a gymnastics program. When you look at facility availability, you know, Wilmington does not have a pool in the town, so that creates a challenge. Pool facilities are similar to ice rinks, charging very high rent, and they're booked solid. So, you know, pool facilities within a reasonable distance are really at capacity. Guaranteed long-term gymnastics facility vulnerability, you know, there's a lot of gymnastics areas around. How long are they going to be around? You know, are they going to be supportive if ownership changes, if it goes out of business? We certainly wouldn't want to add a program without a stable, consistent place to house that team. Capacity constraints, Middle Sex League separates for boys and girls swim. So in the fall, the girls' teams swim and then in the winter, the boys' teams swim. So joining right off the bat with our own program would certainly be a challenge because you have to, if you're going to add a girls' program, you're certainly going to have to add a boys' program and vice versa. And I'll get into kind of specifics and rates in a little bit. And gymnastics team, you know, we have a competitive indoor winter cheerleading team, which is very competitive. You know, it really would cannibalize that team, adding a gymnastics program, in my opinion. Some of those girls would switch over and, you know, as I referenced before, in the past, we really didn't have a successful gymnastics program. It would make it tough to really add a program right off the bat and it would hurt our current league champion cheerleading program. Costs. Gymnastics program costs approximately $20,000. That includes facility rental, transportation on buses, coaching salaries, league and state dues, trainer, and miscellaneous expenses. Swim program, there's quite a range, but if you're going to add a boys' and a girls' program, it's approximately $40,000 to $70,000 a year to add a boys' and girls' program. Similar to gymnastics, that includes facility rental, transportation, coaches, and other So we have been invited to join North Reading as a swim cooperative team. North Reading competes in the Cape Ann League currently and they compete as a co-ed team in the winter, which in my opinion would be a nice, easy way to start a program. North Reading already has the pool secured. The Burbank YMCA in Reading is just four miles away. The sport of swimming, it's a low risk of pulling away students that are currently participating on other teams. You might lose maybe a few track kids, but it's certainly an untapped market of students that are looking for an opportunity to compete at the high school level. North Reading would pay all the overhead costs associated with running that program. So as I go back, oops, you know, we're looking at a pretty big chunk of change that North Reading is already paying. Their numbers have dwindled a little bit, so they need help from Wilmington students to field a team. And it would certainly be a good fit. WHS families would have to pay the North Reading user fee, which is $400. Transportation to practices would not be supplied by the high school and that's consistent Transportation to practices would not be supplied by the high school, and that's consistent with all our teams at Wilmington High. For example, our golf plays at Hillview and North Reading. Every day, they commute on their own to practice, and same with some of our hockey teams. North Reading has secured pool time before school, 6:00 AM, and cooperative teams are a two-year commitment, and they can be renewed as many times as possible. So what it comes down to, the opportunity for hosting our own team, you can see the expenses. If we're going to start our own two teams, you're looking anywhere between $13,000 and $43,000, and that's if there's availability. You know, there's not a pool in town. The pools nearby are pretty well booked, so it's certainly a challenge to find pool space, as is. Coach's salaries, based off of our bargained coaching contracts, would equal $15,600. Transportation, I gauged it off of eight meets per year, would go $6,400. League, state dues, $500. Officiating for those eight home meets each fall and winter, $2,600. And uniforms and caps, you're looking at about $70 per student. Where the cost for co-opping with North Reading comes down to families paying the user fee of $400.
So a couple of things to just sort of bring the presentation here to the close, and thank you again to Tim, appreciate the chair's words at the beginning for pulling this information together. You know, in a short, in a short time that I've been here, and Tim talked about this, you know, the piece around fees and the pride that seems to be in place here in terms of, in general, that the students and student athletes are able to participate by not having an athletic fee. And it's certainly important to note that not all aspects of participating athletics is without its own fees, and there's, there are certainly a variety of those. But in general, and unlike most other districts around, there is a user fee, and sometimes quite sizable for participation in athletics. And clearly, the Wilmington Public Schools and the support of this governing body has taken the necessary steps to ensure that what are very large costs associated with the operation of this department are included in the budget from year to year. And you just saw a snapshot of one sport, but we are talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that it does take to operate athletics every year. So I think that that's an important piece to note. That, you know, there are, as best as I can determine, there's no known policies that exist from this committee or guidelines that, you know, talk about ensuring what that actually looks like from year to year. It seems, if I may use the term, sort of a good-faith effort that continues around the table when it comes to the budgeting, to ensure that the program as it exists continues to exist, and the incremental fees are built into it. And so I think that that's also very important to point out. And similarly, Tim talked about, not that recent, but past examples where a new sport was brought into the mix. Again, there appears to be no specific policies or guidelines that govern what that looks like. And I wish to point that out here, because that brings us sort of full circle to where we are. That this is a, this is an opportunity for the swim program that emerged, as I understand it, sometime late in the school year, or sometime late in the school year. And once I was officially on board here, Tim reached out and brought this to me, and I quickly recognized that this was an interesting dilemma, if you will. A dilemma in the sense that there was an opportunity that was brought forward that perhaps could provide the chance for some students who have an interest in this sport to participate in an otherwise venue that we didn't have budgeted, or we haven't had in place. But there is this reality of a fee that runs at odds with the commitment in general, it seems, that the Wilmington Public Schools has had for student athletes to participate. I want to point out that the partnership is something that has been presented and was brought forward to our athletic director. The district has not made any commitment, has not committed in any way, shape, or form to partner with North Reading. This is something that's before you ultimately for your consideration, and an effort to get a sense of the school committee in terms of what we might do, if anything, with this opportunity, and how to proceed. As best as I can understand it, there's no specific action or vote that seems to be associated with athletics in general, outside of the vote taken in totality and the operating budget. So I use that word, sort of sense of the committee of, you know, how might we proceed? This activity doesn't start for a little while, so there's a little bit of time, but I think it's fair to say that North Reading has an interest to find out whether or not we might be interested in going forward. So I guess the final piece is a couple of questions, and I'm sure that there are a lot more that members of the committee may, you know, may have, in terms of sort of going forward. And not just in the sense here of this opportunity with North Reading, but I do think that it's interesting to think about what the evolution of the athletic program looks like going forward. Tim talked a little bit about some of the changes in participation rates, and not surprising to me, I have to say. I know that different programs and different sports are struggling for different reasons throughout this area. What happens if numbers continue to dwindle? Doesn't sound like the district has explored what we would do to phase out a sport, but it might be a question. Similarly, for the expansion of programs. And many other questions, no doubt. So thank you again, Tim, for providing this. I'm certain that there's probably many questions, and again, we've made no commitment here, but it is an interest of the sense of the committee about how we might proceed. So with that.
So with that, I will open it up to questions from the committee. Questions, comments? Mrs. Burns?
I have to say, thank you very much for explaining it, and you've seen my, I'm sure my barrage of questions leading up to tonight's event, and thank you. First and foremost, I have it all written down, but I, after kind of elaborating, you elaborating on the presentation, I am one that if we're going to be a no-fee district, then we need to, we need to hold true to that, but we may need to visit it, you know, financially. I think it's a great opportunity, and I really welcome the North Reading for reaching out. I think maybe becoming more creative with regards to what we can offer our student athletes is going to be the nuance. I think looking for more collaborative and co-op opportunities. But again, you speak to the impact of the current sports. But the other aspect is, is knowing that, I was a field hockey player. If I couldn't get on a team, saying, well, you can get on soccer, I wouldn't do it. And I think athletics has such a huge root in the social, emotional, and mental initiatives that we're driving here at our school. To not capture students who would otherwise participate and risk them, you know, and I'm talking about kids who aren't a part of club pieces, but I just want to make sure what we offer remains fresh and creative, and that maybe we have to think outside of the box to achieve interest of students. I think if we can find more co-op opportunities, you know what I mean, to, you know, to capture these kids. But again, the user fee concerns me, because again, I don't want financial means to be a reason a child doesn't, I should say, young student shouldn't, for not participating in a sport. And that, and that's where it concerns me, and I know that some of the sports have additional fees as they play, and I know the boosters, you have strong booster clubs, which we are grateful for in sustaining and helping with our athletic programming. But I, that's where my concerns are, and you don't want to lose kids who are otherwise participate, you know, if I'm clar, you know, articulating it the way I want to. So I would just strongly encourage you to, I know it might be a nuance, because I'd be the first one to tell you, I don't know your job, and I'm not going to pretend I do, but I think we have to get creative in our thinking as we look forward into the future with what we offer our students and other opportunities we might be able to assist with.
Mr. Bjork.
Can I, do you have a sense of the interest level amongst students for swimming?
I do. As you might have heard, there was a petition created in the community.
I'm sure a lot of adults signed that, I'm just curious how many.
Yep, so there was a Survey Monkey that went out. We have 13 students, nine through 12, that would be interested, which I think is a nice, nice number to start with. And I have those numbers going back all the way through elementary school that were supplied to me.
Okay, so that 13 represents just nine through 12, though? Yeah, okay. You know, I would say, I think it's, I think it's fantastic that we are able to host all of these programs for, without a user fee. And I agree, from a theoretical standpoint, that it'd be great if we, none of our parents have to pay user fees. I'll just say, I think it's great that the programs we host don't require user fees.
I have a question for you. I know that folks have expressed interest in gymnastics. You've got the numbers for swimming. How many ninth through 12th graders are interested in gymnastics?
That I don't have. I've been contacted over the last two years by four families interested in gymnastics.
Okay. And does anyone know, I know we used to have a gymnastics program, does anybody know, did those meets and practices take place, obviously not in this building, but the Altai School?
They did.
They did. What happened to that equipment? Is it in a storage facility somewhere? Is it outdated? Did it get thrown in the dumpster? Does anybody know? Just curious.
I don't know for sure, but it was 2002.
Yeah, so I'm assuming it's probably outdated.
So I think it would be, it would be outdated, and I don't believe there's anything in storage. You know, certainly the old high school had a much bigger fieldhouse to accommodate that, but, so it's not, it's not housed anywhere that I know of.
And have any other schools approached Wilmington for a cooperative gymnastics program?
In the Middlesex League, there are no teams that are currently.
No teams at all?
Currently looking to co-op.
Oh, looking to co-op, okay.
The numbers of the 11, 11 other schools are sustainable.
They have enough, they have enough to field their own?
The league wouldn't approve it if we said, hey, let's take our four girls and partner with Reading or partner with Winchester. The other league schools wouldn't approve it, so it's tricky, yeah.
Yeah, that I understand. Mrs. Bryson? And all of the other Middlesex schools have a gymnastics team, or we're the only one that doesn't?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I do want to say, although, and I'm grateful that we don't have user fees, some of these sports do cost parents out of pocket hundreds of dollars, which, that's where my concern is, because it, it's not just being able to play a sport, it's being able to, you still have to afford to play that sport. I know you brought up cheering, for instance, there's a, I've been told, forgive me, please correct me, there's a camp over the summer that it's mandatory for them to attend at their expense, which is 300 and some odd dollars. And I know it's hearsay, but I'm told that it could impact their participation in the fall sport, and that's kind of, I don't, I mean, again, I don't know the competition. Cheerleading for me was, you know, was high school basketball, football.
No, it certainly changed, yeah.
You know what I mean, so it has changed, but I, that's where my concern lies. I want to make sure that kids who may not be financially set aren't going to be deterred from being, from, away from these sports, because of certain of the sports we offer have these larger parental fees. But I wanted to ask you, do you ever do an end-of-year survey amongst the athletes or students about their experience in the sports? If there was other sports, they would, you know, just kind of feeling around if there are other sports that they would, would have played if they didn't play foot, you know, that we don't offer?
On a case-by-case, my first fall, I did do a survey to gauge student interest, student feedback. You know, as I look to maybe add that further, that is something I think I would want to speak to the union, teaching union president about, since the coaching positions are part of the teacher's contract. I want to be mindful of.
Of course.
Not overstepping, but certainly student feedback is very important, and it's, it is something I've done, and I brought a copy if you want to see it.
I just didn't know if every couple of years, throwing it out, you know what I mean, and just getting the pulse, I suppose, was a lot of that thing. Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Toppett?
So being a cheer dad, I know the cost of $300, $400, but it's also the competitions themselves cost money, and then, then they get to go to Florida, they get to go, and you have to come up with $2,000 within like two weeks to send them down to these competitions. So some of these sports you don't think cost a lot, you know, oh, what do you need, you know, a pair of sneakers and an outfit? It is pretty expensive, so for $400, it doesn't seem, it seems expensive, but when you talk about like hockey and having to buy a pair of skates can cost you $250, you know?
Tell me about it.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, $400 doesn't seem to me to be, I mean, and, you know, you talk about booster clubs and stuff like that, and they can do charity-type things to raise the money to pay for those, those fees. You know, definitely think it's something we should look into.
Mr. Bjork.
I have a quick question. We have, I know we have programs in place that will assist families in need for things like Chromebooks, that type of thing. Do we have programs in place that'll help student athletes who may need financial assistance?
Well, from my standpoint, I'm not involved in any of the finances, no, because there is no collection of user fees. You know, from what I'm heard, if someone might not be able to afford cleats, I think the coach will make sure that young man or young girl gets a pair of cleats.
Case-by-case, basically.
Yeah, so I'd like to think that no one is out there that wants to participate that isn't getting the help that they need, so.
Mrs. Bryson?
But there's nothing systematic in place where someone could apply for funds if they wanted to do the swim team, for example, but couldn't afford it. There's nothing that we have in place that says they could apply for some, for some financial support, like a form you might fill out if you can't afford a Chromebook?
Yeah, so this is kind of uncharted water, if you will. You know, every other sport.
So maybe not that, but cleats, or, or does it become just a, I think they need this, so I'll supply it, but not anything that's?
Yeah, there's no formal process, yeah. Pretty much what the athletic department, we're going to, we're going to supply the coaching, we're going to supply the transportation. We have a uniform cycle, but, you know, you make a good point. You know, we give ice hockey players a navy jersey and a white jersey, but they're on their own to find skates, equipment, helmets, et cetera, so that's probably thousands of dollars, yeah.
So I'd like to try to direct our conversation and our discussion a little bit towards these key questions, but we're touching upon it. How do we define, as a community, user fee? Because for us to say across the board, we don't have athletic user fees in our district, but we've just given several examples of things like paying, parents having, and guardians paying for camps out of pocket, paying for their skates, paying for their helmets, extra practice clothing. To me, those are fees. So how do we define user fee?
I have a question with that, is that we're not charging the $400, North Reading is actually.
That I understand, yeah.
Is doing it, so it's their user fee, not ours, and I would guess that the parents would pay them directly, either by cash, check, credit card, or however.
To segue to that, will these students on the swim team be competing under the North Reading banner or Wilmington?
That I haven't, it would be called North Reading slash Wilmington. North Reading would be the whole school.
Competing for our school, so, and I, because I got to tell you, I very much support cooperative, if it allows more window, as I said before, but that's, even though we don't host it, that's still one of our sports, and they're competing under Wilmington. And that's kind of, I just, for everything else, I won't have to repeat myself, but it's, to me, it's technically a sport that we support, and I'm happy to support it, I just think we need to find a financial way so that students can't participate. I have no issues with them finding their way to practice or meet, or however that works, but I think it's something that we need to visit, whether we have to look at the athletic department budget, you know, in thinking of creative ways, if we have to revisit the athletic, the budget. You know, in, in thinking of creative ways, if we have to revisit the athletic, the budget for the athletic department. You know, that's a little premature at this juncture, but I think I made my point.
If I may, you know, so I think it's an important point, and one would imagine, I don't know for sure the answer to this, but, because I think it's, it's captured in the heart of sort of these, some of these questions around how do we move forward in the, the possible expansion of a program, we're talking about swim here right now, ultimate frisbee. There's probably other examples in short order that we could think of. And maybe if this was a partnership that came, or a co-op that came forward a year ago, there would have been the time to consider it and perhaps bring it forward and for consideration, even as a co-op, to be part of the operating, for the athletic budget. And just like it is that in the operating budget, we are, you know, your support is providing for the payment of buses, for the football team, and everything else, one could imagine that these could be captured. I would, I would imagine it'd be no different, could be captured within that budget line. But the timing of this didn't work that way, you know, and, and so, you know, I just think that that's an important piece to point out. But I think that the notion of co-opping as a, as a, as a venture or move forward, I, I think absolutely could be considered, you know, as part of the overall operating budget, and, and still in the spirit of committing the opportunity for Wilmington athletes to participate. The timing of this is just, you know, it's not in alignment, so.
Mr. Rexdale?
I just want to ask a quick question that's a little off the user fee topic, and then come back to that. Tim, we were talking about the middle school waivers. For, are there any considerations given to the type of sports that the request is being made for? Because for some of the sports, I think most, most obviously like cross country, it's like, well, okay, anyone can run, and there's, you know, you're just either ahead or behind. Softball is also, you know, relatively non-contact, but for something like hockey, you were saying that a lot of the schools have to use middle school waivers to field the varsity hockey team. So for a, a stronger contact sport like that, is there a consideration given into the appropriateness of having, you know, eighth graders or even potentially younger than that playing varsity hockey with seniors or whoever?
Right, good question. The only sport that the league does not approve middle school waivers for is football. So there was a school in the league this past fall that needed some help at the freshman level, and as a league, we did not approve their waiver, just for the reasons you touched on, having eighth graders complete the physical nature of football at the freshman level. We didn't have that. So that specific school didn't have freshman football this year. In order to apply for the waiver, there has to be a need to sustain the program. So certainly some of the other programs, soccer, basketball, hockey, pretty much down the line, has good numbers. So, you know, I wouldn't be eligible to apply for waivers for those sports.
Okay, but it also sounds like that the nature of the sport and of the, that kind of, those kind of physical realities are taken into consideration when requesting or approving that type of waiver. Okay, great. Incidentally, the fact that we have freshman teams for all of the sports, you're saying, I find that really gratifying, that we were able to field that, and that we were able to provide so much participation. For the, for the user fee issue, so one of the questions up here about whether we should have an actual policy or procedure on the, on whether user fees continue, I mean, it seems to me that we're all in support of keeping the lack of user fees. That's something that we tend to pride ourselves on, but that we don't necessarily need to codify it into policy. I mean, a day may come when budgets, budgets impales to, hopefully never, but to consider something like that. And it seems that broadly speaking, that we can continue our practice right now, and I don't know if we need to enshrine that as a, as a policy matter at the district or committee level. On the specific swimming issue, first of all, it seems clear that if we're going to offer swim, that this North Reading co-op is the way to do it, rather than spending seventy thousand dollars to try and secure our own pool time and all that. Most lopsided presentation I think I've ever seen, you know, like, well, we could do this, or there's this other option, where they already have pool time, and it wouldn't only cost four hundred dollars. All right, I'm sold.
Steve, I guess you need your pool. Come on over. Get a vacuumer first. Go a hundred laps.
So I, I don't know if, if the four hundred dollars is something that, I mean, as Glenn was saying, that the, the, next year, that could be something that can be thought of budgeting as far as the overall budget goes. But I don't think it would be unreasonable to, you know, to offer to parents saying that this is something that we cannot provide as our own district under our own program, but it is an opportunity that we can provide if you're willing to do this and your children are interested. I don't think that the four hundred dollars, again, given how much that participating in athletics, as we've just been discussing, does often cost, I don't think that would be unreasonable.
Go ahead, Mr. Bjork.
I'll just piggyback by saying I echo your comments. That's exactly what I was gonna say. I would, as long as I'm on this committee, I'll advocate that we don't charge user fees, but if there comes a time when we have to, we have to. So I wouldn't, I don't, I think it would be extremely imprudent to create a policy. And I understand that timing is at issue with this North Reading opportunity. Is this something we should make a decision on tonight, whether we?
I, I, I don't, well, I'm looking at Tim, I mean, and I've asked this question before. I don't believe that there's a deadline that has been provided. Am I correct?
It's just, it's getting close to, you know, and we're two months away from the start of the winter season, so.
And does our, does our participation, does that require a school committee vote? At some point? Or is that just, is that just the, the district making a decision?
Do we, do we have the money for the coaches and?
Well, no, I'm just talking about the North Reading.
Yeah, but even, even that, we still have to have coaches.
Aren't they providing?
Yeah.
They're providing it?
They're providing everything.
Oh, they're providing everything. Oh, okay.
Including the bathing suit.
Yeah, the bathing suits cost four hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the money.
So can we just clarify on the, the North Reading thing? So the only thing that our guardians would have to pay is the four hundred dollars. We're not saying that Wilmington as a district is going to pay the four hundred dollars. North Reading's taking care of everything, except for the four hundred dollars, which the guardians would be asked to pay. And have the guardians that have expressed interest in their children participating on the swim team, have they said they're okay with that four hundred? Or are we gonna have a, an angry mob saying, but Wilmington doesn't have user fees? That's my concern.
The folks I've heard from, and it's a small sample size, maybe three or four families have been all positive about it. I know, but of those four, three aren't eligible, they're younger level parents.
Because they're not high schools.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But I know one current family was ecstatic with the opportunity, so.
Okay, and we're not going to be providing waivers for younger kids?
Nope, that's not allowed, yeah.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I wanted to just make it very clear. Another, just if I could, kind of getting back to this question of should the administration or the school committee develop guidelines that establish a clear pathway for when new, new sports bubble up? I think when you showed us the numbers, clearly there's a, a cycle, right, to interest and popularity of sports. So when I see something like winter cheer going down, but there's a concern if we open up a gymnastics team, that cannibalizes winter cheer, well, interest in winter cheer is going down. So I kind of do think we're at the point where we need to establish some clear pathways for how do you introduce a new sport? You know, do you talk, if there's an interested parent, do they talk to you? Or do they go to social media with a change.org petition and push it through? I think we're at that point where let's establish something that is very clear, very well communicated, and fair to everyone. I think we're at that point.
I would love that opportunity.
Yeah, she was before me.
Mrs. Bryson?
I just had a very quick question. Of the thirteen students that you know would be interested in this, how many are from the same family?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Talbot?
So you, you said that there was one person, that there was one kid that would actually join the team this year? Or are there more kids? Because you said, out of the families, you said that there was one that would qualify. The rest were under, they were in high school.
Out of the three or four families that emailed me prematurely, there is one that I know of. The other three have, their students are in elementary and junior high.
Okay, so, I mean, wouldn't that be like a, a kid joining a, a soccer club that was outside of, like, you know, that, you know, like a traveling team that was going elsewhere? I mean, God knows, there's so many of them out there, but, so what, what are we really making, whether or not they can go join the Reading, you know, swim team? If they, if Reading takes them, then how can, you know, it's not really our decision, I mean, you know, what they do on the outside.
Mr. Bjork?
Let me say, you talked to one family, but if I heard you correctly, there are thirteen students in the high school level that are interested. So it's more than one person, you're talking about thirteen people.
Right, I just didn't hear from the other families.
Yeah.
Since the announcement was way premature.
Mrs. Bryson?
And this would be, would be the North Reading Wilmington, it would be a collaborative. So we would be, we can't, our students couldn't just go there and do it, it would be part of the work we're doing together. In a different league, though, it wouldn't be in the middlesex league. So I think that, but with this whole user fee piece, and I feel like there was so, this is so well done and so much information. So I have questions that don't actually all align, because I feel like, wait, I have a question about this. But I know we want to talk about this swim piece, and I understand that. And I will echo what my colleagues have said about being in support, this seems like a good opportunity for us, it seems pretty low risk. And then should we develop just a tremendous amount of interest over the next few years? Who knows sort of what could come from that, but I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But with this idea of user fees, I guess I just would love for us to know exactly what that means when we present that to parents? Because it means the actual fee of playing the sport, but not really this and this and this and this.
Right.
And I think that the four hundred dollars, when you actually think about all the sports that we offer and the amount of money families are paying on top of what it would cost, is probably more than, or about the same as paying the four hundred dollars for swimming, or more, I would guess. And so I think to say no user fees is, it's no user fee to actually play the sport, but you're, you're going to have to pay a whole lot of money over time for this sport.
But keep in mind, oh, sorry, Chair?
That's okay, go ahead, Steve.
I was just gonna say, but keep in mind too, people in other towns are paying all those equipment costs and user fees.
Yeah.
So I, I think it does make sense to clearly, get all the data, and clearly, clearly define what we mean by user fee, and-
And be upfront with families, so that if there is a cheer camp, or something that is considered highly recommended or mandatory, that family, that children or teens doing this work know ahead of time, and then there will be this. Because no user fee signifies it's not going to cost anything to play, which isn't actually completely accurate.
Sure.
Does that make sense? So I would just love to have a better sense of that as we move forward. And sort of the fees for all of these things, I think to be upfront with families would be, would be really helpful.
Yeah, not just swim, but in general.
In general.
Mr. Talbot, and then Mrs. Bryson. I have Mrs. Bryson.
It's a, it's a pretty good deal considering it's four hundred dollars per kid, and if you have ten kids, that's four grand, where you were talking, what, twenty, forty, seventy thousand dollars? You know, for us to do it, to field a team, but, you know, we can do it for a lot less by co-opping with North Reading, so.
Again, if you only have one student, it's only four hundred dollars, but if you have two students in the high school that participate, that's an eight hundred dollars. I just want, I think, I think going, personally, I don't have a problem this year, but I really think in considering this for next year, that we find a way to alleviate it for, for families. I, I certainly don't want money in extra fees being the, you know, being the reason a kid doesn't participate. Could be a skilled kid, I keep thinking of the blind spot, the blind, that, thank you, blind side. You know, I wouldn't want a kid who, who has an opportunity to participate, just not do so because of costs. I have no issue with the lateness that if the board considers, you know, want, you know, wants to consider this season, I, I'm not against, but I just, I just want to make sure it's inclusive to the kids in our district and those who don't come from financially stable homes. That's, that's my own, kind of, that drives everything else with me. Thank you.
Any other, okay, I think we have a lot to think about and a lot to work on. As far as the swim team goes, I'm hearing that we're comfortable with moving forward in whatever capacity we have the right to say. I think we do all want some more information on individual team and what is expected and required beyond a fee to play, or no fee to play, as the case is in Wilmington. I also think we are at a point as a district where we really need to look at how we go about introducing a new sport, and do we have the capacity, and what's involved, and what's the proper process to, to doing something? Because I think we all felt a little bit caught with this particular situation. It's wonderful that somebody brought it to our attention. I think we just didn't know how to handle it, honestly, because we had no precedent to follow. So where do we go from here? I think you have some more work to do, sorry.
That's fine.
Any other comments or, or questions? But thank you very much, again.
Just in closing, working together on a policy to add a sport, I think would be great for the district. You know, I remember someone calling me and saying, oh, did you see there's a petition online? And it was, the petition made out to me to add a swim team. And it's, you know, I think, I don't think, you know, it's not like I have a pool of money that I'm
Right.
deciding who, who gets what.
Who gets what, right.
You know, in, in full disclosure, you know, I like all sport equally. You know, my wife was the captain of her swim team, and one of my sons does gymnastics, so, you know, but I'm also mindful of what's in the best interest of the district and their finances as well, so.
Mr. Edwards, thank you very much
Thank you.
for this, this report. This was super helpful. And as I said earlier, it was a little detail, so that's great. Thank you for your time. Okay. Our next discussion item this evening is the approval of the student activity accounts for 2018, 2019.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, if I may, and thank you, Tim, just to go back, so, just, just to clarify. To be clear, that there's a general sense, am I correct of the committee, that we may go ahead with this partnership at this time?
I certainly think so.
Yeah.
Again, I know it's not here for, for a vote, but just, just to be clear on that. And we do have, and we'll certainly continue the conversation in terms of next steps around information gathering and the like. But thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, now we're moving on to the student activity accounts for the 2018, 2019 school year. I'm just gonna introduce this for us. Is that you?
Again, yeah. As the memo in, in front of you, as well as the attachment, the DESC recommends, does a mandate recommends that school committees approve student activity accounts annually. So in front of you are the student activity accounts that we have for the high school, middle school, and the other schools, the elementary schools just have a general account in his little description. Student activity accounts are under the, each principal of the school, and their responsibility to manage the funds and so forth. But here, in front of you are just the accounts that I used in the various schools. Elementary mainly, field trip related stuff and so forth, so.
Comments or questions? Mrs. Bryson?
I just wanted to ask, what happens once a class graduates? What happens to their student count? How long does it stay with us, or?
Yeah, it, it should be maximum of two years after a class graduates. And then it's, in case any unpaid bills come through and so forth. And then at the end, the, when a class is graduating, a class officer should create a bank account.
I see.
And then after the two years, whatever funds are left, through the principal gets transferred, should get transferred to the persons, the, the class officer's personal account, no longer part of the school.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rogiro, these student activity accounts are really just a bucket, if you will, for any fundraising? Or most of them are fundraising activities?
Correct.
A place for those monies to go? Okay, and I understand for some of these clubs at the high school, although not athletic clubs, they are competitive in nature? Or have a competition aspect to them? So the action before us is to move to approve the 2018, 2019- So the action before us is to move to approve the 2018, 2019 student activity accounts as listed. Do I have a motion?
I love the idea of motion.
Mr. Bjork, okay, so our second, Mrs. Burns, thank you, all those in favor? That would be unanimous, thank you folks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a draft of the fiscal year twenty budget calendar. My goodness, I feel like we're always involved in this. Uh, Mr. Rogiro, you're gonna send us some information with us, huh?
I'm in the midst of three budget cycles right now. I'm trying to close one, in the middle of a second, and getting ready for the third, so. Um, this calendar is very similar to what you've seen in the past, um, and there's some dates when the town meeting is, town manager's budget presentation is tentatively scheduled, town meeting. Um, we, as we do every year, will have, um, budget meetings in early November with department heads and so forth to go over their requests and so forth. So, very similar to what you've seen on many prior years and following the same schedule.
Any comments or questions? I'd like to make one comment. I've highlighted on the list of dates, February thirteenth, the day before Valentine's Day of 2019, public hearing on fiscal year twenty budget, school committee, here. We've never had anyone come. This is the one opportunity a year that's a public hearing. People can participate and ask questions. So that's my challenge to the community, be here on twenty, what is it, February thirteenth? Thank you.
Given the wrong day, true.
Is I'm given the wrong day, yeah, on purpose, right? February thirteenth, 2019. All right, next item, we've got the summer professional development report. And I think we're gonna hear from Dr. Regan.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, um, you have all the information in front of you, it was given to you in your packets. There was quite a bit of activity this summer for our staff members with respect to professional development. I was pretty impressed as a new person to the district. Um, I think Wilmington should be very proud of what it offers locally for its teachers and other professionals to, uh, extend their professional learning over the summer months. Um, I won't go through each of these items, you know, line by line, um, but just some of the highlights in, in science and technology. We, as you know, we have a sizable grant that the district was awarded. It's a hundred thousand dollars, basically over three years. Uh, we're focusing a lot of that on some robotics programming. That's gonna largely take place after school and a couple of our staff members were able to participate in some pretty exciting, um, robotics, professional development this summer in preparation for that. Uh, there was curriculum work done in ELA in math and performing arts and in wellness. Um, our student services department offered a really unbelievable, um, menu of opportunities for teachers that a lot of it focused around social emotional learning, which is something that we talk a lot about, our social emotional health, mental health, um, trauma, um, and how that impacts students in the classroom, how it impacts them behaviorally. Um, so some really, uh, really well-done programming there. Um, our PD in your PJs program, which is a hybrid online course offered through technology, uh, this year focused on Google, um, and how you can utilize as a teacher, Google in your classroom. Um, this was particularly focused at the secondary level with the Chromebooks coming online at the middle and high school. Um, some great opportunities through the health office and CPR, AED training, um, clinical competencies, Narcan training, concussion protocol training for our nurses, uh, and that was done collaboratively. There were nurses from the region that were here participating in, in some of that. Um, and in liter, and literacy at the elementary level, uh, more work on unit development for the writers, excuse me, the readers workshop program. A fourth grade team developed a biography unit, uh, of teachers over at the north. Um, and another program that was about strategies on moving readers to their next, uh, level. You have students that are above or below grade level and they focus on strategies on how to get your students to go to the next, the next level. Um, so most, or almost all of these were in district offerings. And then we also continue to partner with the Salem Collaborative, which is through Salem State University, and we had teachers take advantage of that programming. Um, and we're already off for the fall. We have many WUs, Wilmington Universities, that are being offered in-house, so. Um, you know, I, I, I think, um, the professional development committee and I just met last week and we've got a lot of work we want to do to sort of continue to make our program robust. Um, but I think we've got a nice foundation in this community to, to offer teachers some really exciting opportunities to grow. So, be happy to take any questions if folks have them.
I was just gonna comment, um, I noticed that the PD in your PJs program, get your Google on, I had to laugh over the, the title of the seminar there, seemed to have the largest number of attendees of the options that show. I, I guess I would ask, what else are we doing or what else can we do to support our teachers as we make the move to be fully integrated on the Chromebooks? It seems like, you know, what are we, three years into the program? We've got, what, four or five grades that are, are used in the Chromebooks? Yet I'm still hearing some teachers use them, some teachers don't. And I'm guessing it's probably at a comfort level and, and what's available for curriculum. So, long-winded question of what else can we do? What else should we be doing to support those teachers?
Yes, so I think right now without a, a, um, in, in the absence of a, of a, of a director of, of technology in the district, um, what I would focus on, we do have some money that was budgeted last year, is continue to look at our in-house folks, see what they will continue to offer. And I think you noted that there were a lot of people that participated in that. I think number one, that's because it's, it's a topic teachers are interested in. But number two, I think it's because we're in the online realm, which makes it much more convenient for teachers. And so I know folks like Julie Kelly and others, um, are really eager to continue to explore ways to offer PD using the online or the hybrid format. Um, and I think technology or strategies to, um, increase your use of, of tablets or, or one-to-one devices rather, um, that's a perfect platform to, a topic to use that platform for. So, this year I'd like to focus in on that and, and my plan is to continue to talk to those folks and say, all right, what can we offer? Perhaps find a way to ask teachers what do they need? Um, we did do a PD, well, we, they did a PD survey at the end of last year. Um, and the, the Chromebook piece came up as a topic that teachers are very interested in. So the professional development committee will look at that and what we can offer this fall and winter as WUs that teachers would take advantage of. Um, you know, the, the Google piece is really important because we're a Google district, but, um, we might need to get a little deeper into it with teachers and say like, what types of applications are you looking for? What exactly is it that you want to do with these devices in your classroom? And then try and tailor some PD around, around that. So, I'll, I'll dig a little deeper on that particular item, just to, because I agree with you. We don't want folks to be spending money on these devices and then they're sort of just occasionally coming out of the bag, you know?
Right.
Um, and that's a concern of mine.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Bryson? Ms. Jen. Um, so you list the number of attendees. I'd just be curious to know what sort of, either what you're looking for as number to make sense?
Yeah.
Cause the number doesn't necessarily show me anything unless I know what you could have fit. So I would love to just know, um, how many were you looking for or what was the math? Cause some of them I think can be quite small and so you can't actually fit more than five or six. But then I think some probably could hold up to twenty, I don't, and I don't know. So I would just be curious to know what were you hoping for?
Probably varies from program to program. These ones that you see twos and, you know, threes on, those are generally curriculum development. We had a couple of teachers that we would expect it to be a small group to work on a unit or work on a, a course. But, you know, certainly the programs that were offered through student services, um, we would have liked to see some of those numbers a little bit higher. Seventeen for the cognitive behavioral therapy, that's a nice number. But when you get down to six and using the de-cap, then, you know, I think we'd like to see that always around eighteen to twenty, right? That's a nice size to do with one trainer and, and that many teachers, so. You know, so it does vary from, I think, from program to program. But if you're in between fifteen or twenty for, you know, sort of these typical types of programs, I think that that's a healthy number, yeah.
And I'd say be curious to know sort of what the, the next step is once, so if there's two teachers doing this, are they coming back and sharing, what's the next step? So, and, cause we know PD can be so wonderful, so great, but at the same time, if you're just sending one representative and then they're not really working with the team and then they come back, are they expected to be the ones to share all the wealth? I think, I guess just to know the plan would be great.
That's a good, um, question to raise. And when they fill out their form to ask to go to a professional development, we do ask them to fill the backside of that form out to tell us what are you gonna do when you return? Um, and one of the more common pieces is that they will either share it with their faculty or share it with their department. Um, and so kind of creating that kind of a cycle, and we, we really do push for that. If we're gonna give them in-service credits or if we're gonna pay for them to go to a program, we want it to, you know, we want it to then, then get paid forward as, as it goes. So that is something that we do expect of, of staff, where it's appropriate. Sometimes it may not be, um, the robotics one, for example, was really specific for those two teachers to be trained to do those after-school activities. Eventually, I think that could trickle down, but, um, certainly other ones, it's more appropriate for them to come back and share it with their colleagues, yeah.
Mr. Rockstein?
Um, kind of following up on that point about the, the after, aftermath. How, um, how involved are the principals in reviewing this type of information? So that when they know that these, you know, staff members in their schools have, uh, you know, taken this kind of PD, that they can come back. Uh, you know, it's great for the, you know, when you ask the people signing up for the class, how do you intend to share this? But they can only share it if there's time and, you know, actual support for that, for that to happen at the school level. And that really means at the principal level.
Sure. Yeah, I think the time thing you raised is very critical because I think every principal will tell you that there's, they're so tight on time at faculty meetings and whatnot, and it's hard to almost give up that time for this kind of thing. But, um, just back to the original question, um, when those forms, before they get to me for approval, they do, um, require a principal's signature, right? So we are asking teachers to make sure that principals are in support of the program and that they're in support of whatever it is that's on the backside of that page, that they're gonna be able to come back and present. I think it depends on the level as well. At the high school, it may be more, while the principal's supporting it, it may be more if it's an English teacher going, that the English CTL is gonna support them using some department time to come back and share something with the English department. Um, at the elementary level, it's probably more building-based. Um, but you're absolutely right, there does need to be principal, um, buy-in. And I think there is, that's built into the process of getting it approved. I can't speak to the second part of it, the aftermath, as you called it, to make sure that, um, principals are then, uh, you know, providing that time. But that's certainly something that I can, you know, dig into and, and find a little bit more about. But, um, I know that the district has a history of principals being very supportive of, of appropriate professional development for their staff.
Mrs. Burns?
Um, just a quick question, um, just speak, David's question actually gave, um, gave rise to a question. Do we, are we still working in, um, professional learning?
Communities, PLCs. I don't, I, I don't think we could say that the district is, um, uniformly doing that. Um, I, in, in talking with principals over the summer and getting to know their schools and their programs, what I can say is that it seems like there may be pockets of them here and there. Um, in some cases, you might be able to cleanly label it a PLC. In others, it may just be that there's a, a, like, the fourth grade team at school X might be just really, um, used to working together and they're very collaborative by nature. They're not an official PLC by the book, if you looked at the, at the definition, but.
The past couple of years, they were creating PLCs within our district to carve out that time for this piece. Is that something that you'd be interested in pursuing? I mean, I know there's a lot, we've been through a lot, and there's a lot of transition going on. But I kind of, I guess, how do we do it though? You know what I mean? Uh, cause it benefits the staff, it benefits administrators and, and results benefits our students. So I didn't know, I've heard a lot of positive things about PLCs. So I wasn't sure what your, um, take or, uh, what your thoughts were with revitalizing it within our district or whether or not another route may be a better route, you know, within our schools.
Yeah, I mean, certainly like you, I mean, if you read the research, you, you see that they, they can have, when they're done properly, they can have a, an incredible impact on a school and on students ultimately. Um, it's hard for me at this stage of my, um, tenure in Wilmington to sort of give you a detailed answer on that. Um, on the surface, I'd love to say, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and, and do that. But I know there are several hurdles and, um, one of the biggest pieces is time and scheduling, which, you know, we have a whole host of other, um, you know, competing demands there too. But it's certainly something I'd be more than happy to keep on that front burner and have a conversation with, um, with principals and Dr. Brand about, about whether or not, do we wanna commit fully to this and make this a priority? Or do we wanna try and do a hybrid of it or what, what does that look like?
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's okay. I promise that's it. Um, so, and when looking, again, just looking at the number of attendees and some of this, and also I don't, not holding teachers accountable for then coming back and spreading it. Cause like you said, there needs to be time and there needs to be space for that. But there also needs to be a team sometimes to do some of that work right together.
Sure.
Um, but, and sometimes I think you look at something and say, well, it's gonna cost this and if we send this amount of people, it makes good sense. But might it make sense to have someone come in and go into the classrooms and work with the teachers as they work on their Google class, right? So I wonder, I just wanna, as I said, that level of detail, sort of looking at it and saying, it's gonna cost us this? Or would it make more sense to hire someone to come in and do some of that work in the, in the rooms with the teachers? I know this is summer, but kind of in that mindset of, is this finance, is this fiscally, is this the best? Or, not in general, but this specific one, was this the best move financially? Or would it have been more helpful to take that money? And you've got, some of these speakers are, and you reckon, some of these names are pretty big names and so they're probably pretty expensive. And so are we, is that the best use of money if it's only gonna be a few teachers who are experiencing that?
Yeah, that's certainly, uh, that cost analysis is something we should be taking into consideration. And it is disappointing if you bring in a, a guest speaker and it does, you know, if it isn't grant-funded and it's costing you money out of your PD budget and then teachers don't take advantage of that. Um, sometimes you swing and you miss and you, you know, you wish they had more. But I think, my perspective is anyway, if we're gonna, you know, push to outlays fifteen hundred dollars or something to bring in a speaker, we should be doing the legwork ahead of time to make sure that the interest is there. Um, sometime, and this is all districts, sometimes that happens. Sometimes you think it's just so great that you don't need to, we don't need to do that because teachers are gonna flock to this, you know? And summer can be tough, you know, summertime can be tough to get people to come to something like that, so. Um, you raise a really good point. I don't, um, I guess my only answer to you right now at this stage could be that that is certainly something that we discuss every time that there's a price tag on something that, um, is out of the, out of the ordinary, you know? And during the, during the school day, it's, it's tricky. You don't know if it's, um, you know, a lot of districts have moved to coaching models that they have, you know, employees in the district that are solely charged with going into classrooms and working with teachers around instruction. Um, and that, then they're not, they're not sending them out so much to do PD. You know, we contract with people to come in through TLA to do the readers' writers' workshop with their elementary teachers. When I met with the woman from TLA about two weeks ago, she flat out said, my job is to work, her job is to work herself out of a job. So we get the district to where they have the people to do this in-house, you know? Um, so I, I think ultimately that's, that's something we need to think about.
Thank you so much. Anything further on summer professional development? Okay. Next up is our coordinated program review and corrective action plan.
If I may, sure. Uh, well, Allison, the company come forward. Just a couple of things for the committee and for the community to note. Uh, there are, there are a number of documents, three, uh, to be clear, that will be in this packet for the meeting. Uh, and, um, important to note that, uh, two reports, uh, that recently were completed by the Massachusetts Department of Education are posted on our website. These are public documents. Um, the first is the coordinated program review report of findings, and then the second is the corrective action plan. Again, for members of the committee, uh, as well as the community, this process that has begun, began many months ago and is certainly a very large endeavor that, um, for any district, spends a lot of time, a lot of time and a lot of time behind the scenes that continues. But it is an important piece of their accountability system. And the district Wilmington Public Schools, uh, our, our time last year was up to host a, a review. And so, um, that took place and that led to the first report, that coordinated program review report of findings. And then recently, uh, the corrective action plan, um, fairly recently was completed. And so, um, this, uh, tonight, this presentation by Allison and company will provide, uh, some highlights and sort of where we're going next, following, uh, their visit to our district. So, Alice.
Great, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's been a while. So I thought I would talk a little bit about, um, the process, kind of the themes or kind of opportunities it presents for the year, and then go through literally the indicators. I felt that was maybe the best way to organize it. Um, and I thought I would kind of pause after the indicators if there's question. I mean, we can certainly ask questions, but just so, just logically, if there's sections, um, that we wanted to touch on. And then I figured at the end, if there's more specific questions, we can go through. So, um, looking at just at the CPR process, the review obviously covers. So looking at just at the C P R process, the review obviously covers civil rights, special ed, and E L E services throughout the entire district. The process itself was three full days in March in which they come on-site. The process actually begins the year before with what's considered kind of the district self-assessment, as well as a document upload, which occurs the, in an entire year before. So between the year before, which was the spring of seventeen, and when they come on-site in March of eighteen, they actually kind of review everything, kind of have their framework for what they're coming in to look at inside the district. During their time in the district, they did about forty interviews of kind of a variety. We did post it publicly so that people could reach out. They had some parents certainly reached out. And then there was actually just some community members that also they spoke to, typically, I think, on the phone, that I think maybe had just had an interest or concern, but actually didn't have any students in the, children in the district. As well as special ed teachers, a number of administrators at every level, gen ed teachers, related service providers, paraprofessionals, kind of ran the gamut, as well as all of the administrators in Roman House as well. They did tour most, but not all buildings. They looked at almost all of our special ed programs specifically. They looked at service provider workspaces. And then there was very specific classrooms that they wanted to visit, kind of in a little lengthier look that they asked about. So they would ask for a language-based elementary classroom, let's say, or something to that effect that they might be looking for. The initial report was issued in June. And then the corrective action was, you know, we have some time to kind of collect our thoughts about what we're thinking would be an appropriate action. We submit that to the state. Then they come back with the final corrective action plan, which was actually approved in July of this year. And our final compliance date, the date at which we have to have everything corrected, is May of nineteen. Just so we have an idea. There are some other built-in dates, if you read the report, in terms of things that they're looking for between then. But everything kind of is expected to be corrected by May of nineteen. So in terms of themes, and I put this in here because you'll probably hear about it kind of over the course of the year, whether it's other presentations we do or initiatives that might be going on inside the district. I thought this would be good because it kind of is in line with some of the needs or opportunities that came up inside the corrective action plan and the C P R report. So one of the things that, you know, the state talked about at our exit interview, as well as the number of days I got to spend with them, was that focus on least restrictive environment. And that, that is something that is needed. You know, we've talked a little bit about our state numbers in terms of students we have in sub-separate, as well as in added district placements. And knowing that last year, we actually participated with seven other districts through SEEM and wrote the radar grant to look at our inclusive practices, provide some coaching, as well as have people that are identified in each of the schools that actually will serve as the inclusion kind of team, so to speak, to help provide professional development, be a resource for all the teachers inside the schools. So it was good timing, honestly, that the C P R happened to be coming. But at the same time, we had this opportunity to jump in with a number of other districts to get a grant to actually address this. So you'll see that coming throughout the year. But it also goes in with some of the concerns that the state had about some of our weaknesses. The other thing that we kind of started last year in terms of professional development and is noted in some of our corrective action steps is looking at the goals and objectives that are being written district-wide and making sure that they're kind of really in line with progress for the next step, that they're clearly defined, that they're data-driven. All things that, we actually had already set up a training with Alan Bloom of March of last year. Actually, the Friday that the state came in was, which was excellent timing. She, you know, one of the things we were talking about, we were talking about just goals and objectives. Because remember, when they pull files, they go back for the child's life of being in special ed. So they would pull files on students that were maybe ready to age out, so twenty, twenty-one. And they were looking at files going back to when they were three, potentially. And looking at the progression in goals and objectives. And talking about how, you know, sometimes the data may not, over the life of an I E P, be clear about what is driving the goals and objectives. And that would be an area that they thought might be worth for us to work on. And coincidentally, we had Alan Bloom coming in that Friday to do golden objectives on one of our C I T days. So I think she read it very much like that. So that was the start of it. It's not an end date, you know, process, but that was the beginning of it. As well as looking at, kind of going with everything above, looking at accommodating diverse learning styles. And there's going to be kind of a lot of work over the next year having to do with that as well. And then consistency between what we do and then making sure that it's documented. And so I think the shift into E S B E D in the last few years, there's pieces that exist, but they don't exist in a document in E S B E D. So making sure that everything that's done on paper is actually reflected in E S B E D, which is another thing that is part of the indicators. So the findings that they give, the options that they give you are fully implemented, partially, or not implemented at all. So if you see, these are all the indicators by number that the state comes in and takes a look at in each of the three areas. The top, obviously in green, is everything that we fully implement, which is great news. The partially implemented are the ones below. And there's nothing that we don't implement across the three areas. So I think this gives us an opportunity of kind of making sure we kind of move more green, but also understanding that we are heading in the right direction, even with some of the weaknesses and areas that we have to address. So I was actually pleasantly surprised by this because there's a lot of work even before me to go into having a, kind of a chart that looks like this for the district. So I think this is, this is great news. These are the indicators for special ed that were partially implemented and those that we had to write corrective action steps for. And I'm going to jump into them one by one, but I just wanted to have them on one slide so you could kind of take a look at the totality of them. Ranging from things like looking at requirements for specific learning disability all the way down to kind of the fifty thousand view of special ed itself and having the program kind of fully evaluated. So I'm going to go kind of through each of those, but I just wanted to put them on one slide. The first indicator is what's called the requirements for specific learning disability determination. And so the state about seven or eight years ago changed the way in which you identify students with a learning disability. There is a number of exclusionary factors in order to be identified with a learning disability that also have to be considered. So whether you fall in a limited English proficient status, which is actually what it says in the form, although the terminology has changed a bit, whether your difficulties, let's say, in learning are related to, you know, lack of access to school or poor instruction, those are all things you essentially have to rule out in order to identify a student with a learning disability. And so not consistently throughout the files that were pulled, were all four of those components completed completely. And so the state has asked us to retrain essentially all special ed staff that would be involved in decision-making around students with learning disabilities, on identification of students with learning disabilities per the state, as well as the use of all of those forms. So making sure that those five forms actually get stapled together. Four of them are exclusionary factors. The fifth is the identification page. And making sure that they are all essentially together. And people understand that before you figure, fill out that last form, that the exclusionary factors are considered. So they want to make sure that we correct that. We actually started the training on that because she gave me feedback on that while she was here at the community meetings, which we run monthly. The high school, middle school run them as department meetings, so they're less frequent. But we started that kind of right after, in about April of last year. So we did a large C I T day in which we talked about it. We did some of the community meetings. And then we're going to follow up just again, because we've had a number of new staff this year as well to reboot that. We're working on that over the next month of community/department meetings. So that will be all set by October. The next is looking at transition services. So when students turn fourteen, you have to do what's called a transition planning form. The form looks at what are the students' ultimate long-term post-secondary goals? What are they looking to be when they grow up? But it does break it down into looking at what are some actual steps that the student would have to take in order to make those goals a reality or make those dreams a reality for that student. And then you really need to look at that student's goal, consider it, consider the action steps that they would need in order to reach that goal and translate them into reachable, attainable goal and objectives inside the I E P. So for example, if a, you know, student wants to be a newspaper reporter, giving them the opportunity potentially to have exposure to that, to look at also their writing skills, looking at their ability to interact verbally with people, those are all things that could be translated into appropriate goals and objectives. So the state felt like the T P F forms or the transition planning forms themselves were not completed in the detail that they needed to be in order to be linked with data-driven goals and objectives. And so some of the completion of those goals and objectives can be based on work experience. It can be based on an actual transition assessment. It can be based on other assessments that are completed. But they, they kind of want them all linked together, is what they're looking at. And they're looking for those transition planning forms to really guide the I E P goal and development and be a little more detailed than what we have historically done. And so in terms of, I'm sorry, corrective action would be actually to train anybody. It says, it's chair people, but it's really would be liaisons, anybody that runs an I E P meeting essentially inside the district, so that they are clear about what the expectations of the completion of the transition planning form, how you link that to goal and objective writing, which kind of goes into our goal and objective piece that I talked about a few minutes ago, as well as reviewing it annually, knowing the procedure to make sure it's reviewed annually as well. The next is what's called transfer of parental rights at the age of majority. So the year before a child turns, soon-to-be adult turns eighteen, so the year that their I E P meeting happens and the year that they're seventeen, we actually have to notify parents that this is going to occur, the change in parental rights when they turn eighteen. And so this is where we have a little bit of just a paperwork glitch. So it happens, and it happens at I E P meetings, and it is a paper format. But there is no tracking of that inside our E S B E D system. So that is something we just have to rectify in terms of ensuring that the paperwork that's at the high school typically, when this occurs, when liaisons kind of meet with them and we send out this paperwork, is actually tracked inside our system because it was difficult to prove that we had done it when it's not actually accounted for inside the E S B E D system. So in part, there's going to be some training around, ensuring that any, certainly any new staff and anybody that's on staff understands the importance of this and what the procedure is. Part of that procedure is going to make, going to be making sure it's tracked inside our E S B E D system as well. The next is procedural requirements applied to students who are not yet identified as being special education. And so this is really looking at specifically discipline and administrators' awareness and knowledge that, and handbook component, the component that goes along with the handbook, to identify that students under discipline, students are entitled to having an expedited evaluation if we suspect that the discipline is related to, potentially, to an unidentified disability. And so that means that if you have somebody that's struggling, that's potentially had a discipline situation, that the parent is aware, as well as the administration and school staff, that if we suspect that there's something else, it's not somebody just kind of having, you know, a poor choice, and perhaps it's a symptom of another pattern of behavior, that they are entitled to certainly being evaluated, but in some cases, even an expedited evaluation, depending on the severity of the discipline potentially being given to the student as well. So that is a, it's a training component, letting the staff know, the administrators specifically know. It's also, it has to be identified inside our handbooks as well. And so I believe that was corrected. I'm going to just, in the two thousand, the eighteen, it was just a one-line thing. As well as we have our own attorney coming actually Friday to speak with all the administrators and train them on the discipline procedures as well. The expectations, you know, whether special ed identified an I E P, a five oh four plan, or somebody that you may suspect may have a disability, but actually isn't identified as having either. So that's Friday for the administrators. So the next goes into what I talked a little bit at the beginning about, that relates to kind of looking at accommodating diverse learning styles across all settings. As well as, we did a very large staff training last year with all of the special ed staff on a C I T day. Our attorney came out and talked about the laws, the regulations, the components of an I E P, why they exist, what you kind of put where from a legal perspective, why we do that. So people, in part because I wanted to create some more consistency among the district in completing from a paperwork and understanding point of view, but also so that they really had a sense of why they did some of the things that they did and how it supported students. And so what we haven't done historically is done the same training for everybody. And so they, they want, obviously, our gen ed teachers, paraprofessionals, and all special ed staff who haven't received the training to receive the training, which is actually occurring on the first C I T day for everybody in the entire school staff on the twenty-eighth. So our attorney who's coming Friday is also coming on the twenty-eighth to do that. So the second component of that is looking at the, how to accommodate diverse learning styles. So the first part of understanding of that is for gen ed teachers to understand their role as it relates to students with special needs inside their classrooms. What is their legal requirements? What are the things that they are responsible for? And so that there's clarity around that. The principals have done a lot of work around the D cap with our staff over the last year. They are continuing to work on that. We have, we're putting together a small subgroup and going to put together a PowerPoint with a number of us, kind of representing all levels, as well as myself from special ed, looking at how to accommodate, how to actually put some of these D cap accommodations into play. And we're going to be a little bit of a traveling road show for a while. And then the second piece is really, we also did that at the orientation day for all new staff. As well as kind of down the line, I'd like to take another C I T day before the end of the year. We talked a little bit about, we just have to kind of iron out the details on that, to have a follow-up potentially with somebody similar to Alan Bloom, not to commit Alan Bloom, but to come back and look at, you know, how do you put some of these actual accommodations into play? What does it look like inside the classroom? And how to do that well? So the other component of that is now all the buildings have inclusion coaches inside them that are attached to that radar grant. And they become the kind of in vivo, in the moment, people that should be sitting on the I S T teams, connect, or connected at some capacity if they can't sit on them all, in order to support students that are struggling and help provide the teachers some coaching around how to implement some U D L strategies on an ongoing basis versus it being just a one, one-day P D, let's say. So the principals, a number of the principals have agreed to jump in and try to form a group that puts together a thoughtful PowerPoint that hits it from all angles. And they're getting the message a number of different ways, so. The next is facilities and classrooms. So we had a classroom at the middle school in which there were two special ed classrooms that happened to be in a short hallway right off the cafeteria. In part, they were there because of the equipment needed for both of those classrooms. There happened to be another room right across the hall that served really good, kind of for space location. Both classrooms had students with high needs in which the equipment was across the hall. And so I think the thought process when the classroom was put there was, that was just a good location. The state had some concerns that it essentially didn't allow the students to be embedded into the life of the, of the building. And so they requested that one specific classroom got moved. So it's moved to kind of the front hallway of a number, another of strings of classrooms. It's not too far, so that there's, you know, if equipment is needed, et cetera. They're right around the corner, but it is in a hallway of five or six other classrooms. So that was taken care of first day, well, in August. Mr. Walsh took care of that. And then the Beltwell has a related services room. It's essentially a classroom that has a small room inside that's got a, so kind of an office inside, as well as a couple of separate areas. And when the, they took a look at the schedule, there were, so for example, you might have O T, P T, O T speech really, and occasionally a physical therapist kind of in there. Never did we have all three at the same time, but there were times that, there was one block of time in the schedule in which there was a, and I might have this backwards, Kristen, a speech therapist with one student and an O T with two students working inside the same vicinity. It was just too visually distracting, they felt, and so we needed to make sure that that was rectified. Mrs. Walsh took care of that. Actually, that week fixed the schedule. But obviously, they're going to come back and do visits and ensure that the schedule that we have is, you know, continues. So that was a fairly easy fix. So this is the biggie. The programs, from what I can tell, haven't been, the special ed programs, from what I can tell, have not been evaluated since two thousand and ten. It appears to be. And this has to be kind of an ongoing basis. And so I think, you know, just in conversation with Dr. Brand, we're looking at kind of options to do that. I did write, in part because of suggestions from our liaison from the state, that it's a big undertaking to do in one year. It doesn't need to be done in one year. You essentially have to have a plan to address how you're going to evaluate the programs. And so the corrective action that I wrote looks at being a three-year plan, looking at different things with the totality of the report being kind of at the end of that third year. I think we're, we could do it sooner than that if we chose to. But I think Dr. Brand and I are looking at some options. I'm probably going to talk to some agencies about, you know, what they, their thoughts are about how to do this well, you know? I think if we're going to bring in an outside agency, we want to be clear that they're going to be giving us information that's really going to be a change agent for us, as well as be also truthful about what we really As well as be also truthful about what we really need to work on, what we really need to improve and kind of how to get there also. So I think it's a big decision of kind of who to go with. The next is civil rights, I don't want to jump in. It's up to you. Do you want, I mean, does anybody have any questions, would that be easier? Do we want to start instead of? I don't know if, what would be the easiest. Yeah.
Very quick question. As a part of the professional development piece, it speaks to bus drivers and those that are contracted. Does NRT, North Reading Transportation, are they, how do we, how are we ensured that their drivers have gone through this training? Or similar training to meet the requirement?
Yeah, well, so for SE fifty four, I think was your question. So SE fifty four, they're just asking for us for trained special ed and regular ed teachers and paraprofessionals. The civil rights is the one I believe that they are looking for bus drivers to be trained on. But NRT as an aside does do a number of trainings, they do their mandated trainings. And then they would do anything else we needed them to do as well. So they're, they're pretty open, I know that they've done de escalation training with their bus drivers in the past. And it was part of the upload for the CPR was to get actually all of the trainings that NRT did. As part of the process and yeah. But they do, they do have a requirement for bus drivers for one of the CPR, for one of the civil rights indicators.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any, any other questions on the first section?
From the radar grant.
Yep.
Did I understand quickly that we actually have a member from each building?
We do.
Part of that?
We do, we have multiple. Yep, we've got three from let's say the middle school, two from the high school, one is Sue McDonald, who I know is kind of everywhere. And it's a kind of a cross section of positions. So we have a number of general ed classroom teachers. We have a number of sub separate special ed teachers. I have got a number of inclusion special ed teachers, reading teacher at middle school, I think. Math teacher at the high school. So it's, it's actually a good, interesting group in terms of not being all, let's say, special ed driven potentially. And we have at least one from every building.
That's great.
Yeah, some buildings I have three.
Mr. Ragsdale.
For, for the last three, sort of, we were looking at the fifty thousand, fifty four, fifty five and fifty six. The, so fifty five, I think was the, that was the inclusion in the school life, the building.
Yeah. Facilities.
Facilities.
Yeah.
That's something that, I think that the, having a building that's kind of, or rather a classroom that substantially kind of, you know, moved off from the, from the rest of the school. Is kind of an easy thing for observers to see, so I'm not surprised that they would, that the team, the evaluation team would, would focus on that. How much do we look into the broader issue of making sure that that actually happens? Because it seems to me that the, the classroom is an obstacle, like having that classroom there is an obstacle to having them fully integrated in the school. How do we ensure that at an actual kind of, you know, curriculum and the teacher level? That we are ensuring that, that our substantial separate classrooms are incorporated as much as possible into the life of the school?
So substantially separate is probably not a fair characterization. I know we sometimes refer to our specialized programs as being sub separate, but all the students' programming is all driven by their IEPs. And so of the students in that classroom specifically, there is nobody that is in their full day. All of those students have a varying degrees of inclusion depending on kind of their strengths and needs. And in terms, so they are all hooked up with a gen ed classroom in some cases for most of the day. In some cases, just for maybe a couple of blocks a day. Sometimes it's also a couple of blocks plus all allied arts or specialists as well. But their level of integration into classrooms is driven by student need. And so aside from that, they are, because of their location or where it was, they were never left out of anything, let's say, in the building. You know, they attend much like anybody else in the building. Any activities, special events, you know, anything that might go on that might be a school wide event. I don't know if I was necessarily hitting your question, but I don't think that the location of their classroom drove their programming in any way.
One other thing I wanted to ask, and I guess this is, this kind of applies to the whole CPR and not just the special education area is. So this is, I mean, they're evaluating us against, you know, statutory and related requirements that, that we, we can look at as well. Were there any of their findings that were, that were a surprise to us?
No, I, I think the one I was surprised about would be, would be a civil rights one looking at kind of curriculum bias and access, access to everything. I think that the district, I mean, I have a clear policy for how we ensure access for students, but we certainly do. And I think that there needs to be maybe just some clarity in terms of our, on our offers for student activities or clubs or sports. That, you know, it is open to everybody, although that is, and we do have a great representation across lots of different subgroups of students' inner activities. So that, that was one that was surprising to me. From a special ed point of view, I think that we got a little caught up in documentation versus practice in a couple of the indicators. So if you look at the specific learning disability paperwork indicator and the, the indicator having to do with the transition planning form, age of majority. In some cases, they were a paperwork that in practice, people do them. They're not doing a good job logging them into the computer systems, which makes me, when they're asking me to pull a file from two thousand and twelve. Unable to go back and, and look. So if they pulled current files, I would say that we're in a different place because of the use of ESPED over the time. And what, you know, for a long time, the state was doing, let's say, SLD paperwork that was just hard copies. And so I couldn't produce things from that far back where now it's logged into our ESPED system. So I can print off kind of anything we want. But again, they're not looking at just this year's IEPs, they're looking at IEPs for the life of the file that they pulled. And from the time that that expectation came into the state, which I think was two thousand and four or five.
And one last thing, you said that the, that as far as you could tell was that the last time that we had done an evaluation, self evaluation of our SPED programs was two thousand and ten. So, so the, so Dusty does a CPR every six years in district, so we would have had our last one in two thousand and twelve. Were we cited at that point for the same issue?
No, I think Margaret Reed had done her report just prior to that report coming out. So they were current and actually implementing some of the recommendations at that point. I would have to check for sure, but it doesn't stand out as something we got cited on last time. I think probably in, in part because the recency with which that evaluation was done.
I'll talk a little bit about our civil rights indicators. So these are the six of the twenty eight that were partially implemented. If you could move on to the next slide, Alice.
Great.
I'll just walk you through them. Ten A has to do really with our, mostly with our handbooks. There were disciplinary procedures in handbooks specific to students on IEPs. But there was no language in there specific to students that were on five oh four plans. So we actually recreated those sections so that they were sort of morphed into one. And instead of saying students on IEPs or students on five oh fours, we just, students with disabilities, which encapsulates both of those populations. So that, which is the second corrective action bullet on the bottom, that actually, instead of in progress, it has been done. So those were changed before the books were published and put up online. So, and we also gave us the chance to put the same language in both the elementary, middle and high school handbooks. We will also be talking with administrators on the fourteenth, when the attorney comes in about procedures around discipline for students with disabilities. Just to sort of go over that process with them again, just making sure that that's all very, very clear. The, the second sentence up there, handbooks did not specifically, sorry, specify, I can't see that far. The discipline imposed when harassment or discrimination are determined. We figured that what that is, is that was just a, an omission in the handbook of our, in the back of the middle and high school. Where it was referring everybody back to certain pages. And for those particular offenses, it was blank. And I think it was just a formatting error and just been left out. So we corrected that in the handbooks as well. So it made it look like in here that we don't specify what's in there, it's just not in that chart on the back. So that was added back to the chart and pointed them back to the right policy and procedures in the handbook. Ten B has to do with bullying and intervention, bullying intervention and prevention, excuse me. We will, the mandated trainings that we do every year. And some of our documents that were associated with that did not specify some of the changes that were made to the bullying law in two thousand and fourteen. I think was the year that the laws, law was adjusted. Where primarily they added the word staff in there. So the original language from the state around the bullying legislation was primarily student to student. And then they added some language in two thousand and fourteen to make sure that we understood that staff to student bullying is something that also should be covered under school districts' policies. The school committee in Wilmington, like school committees across the state, you adjusted your policy. It did not translate though to all documents. So there were parts of the handbook that still were referring back to two thousand and ten law. We had to make some adjustments to that. The bullying prevention plan that the district created, you've probably seen this document. If not, it's, it's online. This is not the policy, the school committee policy, this is the district's plan. This needs to be updated to reflect the two thousand and fourteen language. And so actually the Behavioral Health Committee Task Force, there it is, is going to be working on that this fall. And that's a body that includes school personnel as well as community members' parents. So we will bring that back to the school committee once that, those edits are made. So you can see the plan and weigh in on, on that document. But that's, that's one of the biggest pieces having to do with CR ten, ten B. Looking at ten C. Sorry, a lot of pieces of paper over here, I'm trying to balance. We need to provide evidence that there's training that's happened for administrators on procedures to, that ensure that students with disabilities are still having access to educational programming during suspensions. Again, this is something that I, I'm new to the district, but I don't get the sense that this isn't happening. It's more about the fact that we couldn't point to the paperwork that said this is what we do. It's more about being able to produce a document that says this is the procedures that we follow. It's not that if you're, you're suspending a student with disabilities that they're not, they no longer have access to their, to their education. But I will work with principals to, you know, sort of collect and, and publish a document, if you will. That sort of describes what our plan is when a student is suspended from school. And how the, you know, what their options are to continue to have access to their, their education. We also need to develop a protocol for periodic review of discipline data specifically around discipline for students with disabilities. Again, this is something that I think principals will tell you that they do in the district and I'm sure that that is true. But we need to have something that's concrete in how this happens and when it happens and who's overseeing that, which would be me. And making sure that we are, we have a system in place where all principals are looking at that data to make sure that our discipline is not excessive for students with disability versus students without disability. So we will put that process in place. For twelve A, this was corrected online and in our handbook. So this was basically that we just didn't have the name of the person that people needed to look at in the handbook, go to in the handbook. We didn't have Alice's name and was it just you? It's just Alice's name, we had to make sure that she was in the handbook as opposed to just simply saying the district's civil rights coordinator. Had to say who that person was. So we made that adjustment to the handbooks. CR twenty four, this is a little bit of what Alice was alluding to in terms of access. The other piece that it's unfortunate is that, you know, when you get cited on something like this, again, I think that, you know, by nature nowadays. Teachers and curriculum specialists are always thinking about bias when they're looking at their curriculum. This is just something that's sort of out there on the ether and it's not something that we ignore. But Wilmington does not have a formal procedure in place to do that. Fortunately, the state does give us examples of tools that we can use. So in late September, early October, I'll be pulling together curriculum teams at both the elementary and the secondary levels. To look at these tools and we will adopt a tool that we will then use going forward. That will first start by training the curriculum leadership and then they will then trickle down to the teacher level. But some of these tools are really simple, one page checklists that, you know, whoever is implementing curriculum or when you're looking at new curriculum. Or when you're looking at a new lesson or something that you can use this checklist quickly to determine whether or not what you're putting in front of students is appropriate and free of bias. So that will be a focus in the next couple of weeks with some meetings with the curriculum leadership. We won't get the teacher training piece in by the twenty fifth of October, which is one of our due dates, but that's not necessary. We just have to have the plan for that piece, but we will have the curriculum leadership involved with us before then. And CR twenty five is that piece that Alice referred to specifically earlier around, you know, do we believe that, you know, access is available to all students? Of course we do, but again, what can we point to to show that that happens? So part of this process is I will collect data that will support the fact that we do have students. That they have access to all kinds of programming, curricular programming, extracurricular programming. But then we need to come up with a sort of a plan where that's regularly reviewed. Some of this is easy to find, you know, when you're looking at, you know, race, sex. But it's a little harder to sort of talk about religion, sexual orientation. These are, these are a little less easy to measure, I guess, to determine whether or not that's there. But I think in general, that if we can prove that we have programming that is available to all students, then we make appropriate accommodations as necessary. You know, one area that a lot of schools will look at at the secondary level, for example, is advanced placement courses. And what's the makeup of those students, you know, particularly students with disabilities, students of color, you know. And if we find that numbers are off there, then we have to come up with a plan on how we might improve that. So that's, that's a big, this is, this is the one that I think is going to be the heaviest lift on the civil rights side. Not because I think Wilmington is out of compliance in reality, but because it's, it's a hard, it's kind of like hugging a cloud a little bit. It's a hard one to sort of wrap your arms around. But we'll be working on that this fall.
So the last one is the ELL.
Unless there's questions.
Yeah. Any civil rights section, Mrs. Burns?
I would just be interested as, going back to the disciplinary portion of creating protocols of collection of data and driving that. I'd be interested in hearing how, what was developed, how and how it collects it and what it's shown with regards to, you know, improving or. I'd be interested in having that brought back to the school committee, just as an update. And there's a couple of things I would love to, you know, have brought back actually. As you address them, it'd be, you know, maybe we can lump it in one big agenda item, but, but that would be an element that'd be interested in as well.
We had talked about coming back, I think, to the committee mid year, you know, the first of the year, just in general for the whole CPR, so I think.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Susan. So the, the one indicator we found, we found partially implemented was the licensure requirement. That teachers with English learners have to have the SEI endorsement. And they found that not all of our teachers, who had else had the endorsement last year. And I think there may have been two situations. And sometimes that situation is because a student wants to take a course at the high school. And that teacher doesn't have the endorsement, but the student really wants to take the course. So do you take the course away from the student or let the teacher then get the endorsement? So that was one of the situations that happened. We have pretty much corrected it. Right now, we're running the SEI endorsement course. I started it last night and we have thirty one district teachers in it. So everyone who has an ELL student this year is, will be endorsed. If they've, they, most of them already have the endorsement, but there are a handful in the class this year. So they will, they all be SEI endorsed. Right now, in our, in the district, we have a hundred and eighty five teachers with the SEI endorsement. That's including the thirty one. the 31 that are in the course right now. I'm assuming they're all going to pass. And we have just about all our administrators. We just have one administrator without the endorsement. I did run the administrator course last spring, and I will be doing it next spring, so that person will be taking it then. So, the difference between, so we have about, about 40 teachers in the district without the endorsement right now. These teachers have not had English learners. That's pretty much why they haven't gotten the endorsement. I'm hoping to run the training course, the SEI course again next fall. That's kind of was my plan. It took about two years since we became an SEI provider, and I'm hoping to get them all in next year, and then we'll be in compliance. So, also, a part of this corrective action was to make sure they talk to principals and administrators when we are placing students in the spring for the fall, EL students in classes, and everyone's been very cooperative. I've also talked to our HR people when we're, and I mentioned this a few times, and I think, I think she's got it now, when we're posting jobs in school spring to make sure we require the SEI endorsement. So, we're getting, and we're getting, most new teachers have it anyway because of the teacher prep programs it's required now, so honestly, this, this indicator is usually what Desi will find if they're not, if there's nothing else to find, because I don't think any district has all their teachers SEI endorsed, but we're really close. So, we have about 82% right now, and I hope next year to get the rest.
Any questions?
Questions on the ELE?
No? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one slide, but we pretty much talked about it, so just in terms of opportunities for the growth, I think the radar grant is crucial, kind of to a lot of the work that we're going to be doing going forward around looking to accommodate diverse learning styles inside a classroom. There's a number of trainings that are going to be coming up over the course of the year, some more immediate than others, but definitely utilizing some of the CIT days, and then really just looking at kind of the, the needs in the special ed department, and then making sure that, you know, all the programming pieces are coordinated amongst the district, that there's a little more consistency, and, you know, I think the principals have been great about collaborating among some of the programs that we've opened, and I just think keeping that communication going will make big changes going forward.
Want to answer questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And, oh, Mr. Ragsdale, go ahead.
One quick question. Under, for CR-10C, which is the student discipline, I think that you were mentioning that we're, when we look at our discipline data, that we're going to be looking at students with disabilities, I mean, this, the issue of disparate student discipline, I think, usually focuses on other special populations like racial minorities and English language learners and so forth. I mean, I'm assuming that we're going to be looking broadly at special populations, even though we'll have more students with disabilities than any other. That would be the biggest category.
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Bryson?
Just going back to CR-24 and 25. You said that you're going to do the curriculum leadership and you're adopt a tool to help teachers, but I just, this point of equity, diversity, inclusion training is so big, which you've alluded to, it's such a huge undertaking, but certainly not something that a tool itself or a checklist can, can potentially fix, but, so, I guess what, so as you move forward, and I guess for us to know, how, how long do you see this process being? I mean, I don't think it's ever ending. I think we're always going through the EDI training, no matter how long we do it, but some of this is somewhat alarming, right, and I think as far as textbook, I mean, they're looking at classroom libraries, and you're saying, oh, classroom libraries might not be culturally relevant, that's something to consider, oh, textbooks are outdated, that's something to consider, so there's so much that it was just within easy control, like looking at it, but then there's other pieces like racial bias that are so much harder to, that's a huge undertaking.
Yeah, I guess I'd look at the tool as sort of the first step. It's going to uncover much more of the iceberg, and then we're going to have to sort of make a plan from there. It's sort of my perspective on that right now. It's, it's hard for me to think about, I don't want to just assume we're going to do this big training on this until I, you know, this is sort of the entryway into that conversation, and then we can determine, all right, where do we need to focus our efforts in the, in the second, sort of the second piece, right? So, I've got, you know, we've got multiple dates, we have to report information out, you know, I hope that at the end of, if anything, at the end of this process, it gives us that roadmap in terms of where we really need to focus our efforts. I mean, a lot of money has been spent recently. You mentioned classroom libraries, the elementaries are putting a lot of money into those libraries, but, you know, we're assuming people are doing the right thing in terms of making sure that they're, you know, free from bias and whatnot, but we're going to find out some of that information, I think, once we start to analyze. Yeah.
And I think that having the proper PD in place is going to be really essential as we, as we move forward, but of course, the tool is a first step.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think it's, I think it's, it's not looking at it as a problem, but it's an opportunity, I think. I'm like, oh, this is, because we can do some of this work. I think that's exciting.
Yep, agreed.
Thank you, folks. We will definitely keep you on our radar and add you to future agendas to continue the discussion. I think it's important.
Sure, sure. So, going, going back to the end of the special education situations, when we were talking about the larger picture, evaluating our processes and so forth, I think, so what, what you had on the slide was a three-year plan, and, I mean, I might be overlooking that, but that, that concerns me that we're looking like that far out. That seems too long.
That was the suggestion of our liaison from the Department of Ed, because what she, I think, has experienced is that people will contract with an agency to come in and do it in one shot, and sometimes what you get is a, either canned or somewhat watered down, not specific to a district kind of report if you don't pick the right place, and so the, the plan actually was looking at different things in the three years. One was continuum of services, one was looking at spot processes, one was looking at actually programming, and it was, actually at her request, that we, we wrote it that way, in part, I think, to give us some flexibility as well, because she understands, I think, the level of undertaking it is.
Sure, and it's, yeah, I mean, it's something you can't, you know, can't turn the Titanic in a ten minutes, but-
But I think Glenn and I have had, shared similar, that's, that's three years out potentially of getting any hard data then, is the downside to it.
I know it's, it's been a long conversation, but, yeah, the three-year window, I, I think is too far out, and I think we have to figure out what the capacity is to, to engage in a, in a, in the right kind of analysis to get, as Alice said earlier, the right kind of data, but it certainly goes without saying, even in the absence of the CPR report, that the, the special education programming and services in the district is of concern, you know, as I do my information gathering, and thus to also hear that we haven't really perhaps for some time dug into analyze our programs and services would seem very timely, and so to the degree that we feel like we would have the capacity to do that on a more accelerated timeline, regardless of what the department might suggest, I think would be in our best interest. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda this evening is our school committee operating protocols. As I hope everybody recalls, at our workshop a few weeks ago, we had quite a good discussion on operating protocols that we may want to consider implementing in our work, and at the time, Mrs. Bryson and Mr. Ragsdale offered to compile this for us, and they have a document with them this evening. They're going to present to us as a draft and, and see where we go from there. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to you folks. Do you want to take it?
I can start us off.
Start us off.
So, so the draft of this document was based on some of the example protocols that were shared with us at our workshop by Mrs. Presser, as well as by the notes that we had taken during the exercise that we went through, sort of, I think it was the hopes and obstacles and, I forget what the last category was, steps to, to try and improve things, how we want our meetings to go. So, those were taken into account as well in, in drafting these protocols, trying to keep them, you know, like everything, balanced, comprehensive enough that they really cover all the things we want to cover them without it being a difficult document to get through and having too much information in there. So, you can see that it was split into four different categories, about roles, communication, open meeting at our executive session, and then the actual, or open meeting law in executive session, and then meetings themselves. The roles and communication categories are a little bit, not quite as clean as the rest of them, so it's hard sometimes to fit things into precise categories. One thing that I'll mention that we went back and forth on a little bit was in certain places, how much to make a strong definitive statement versus to qualify it a little bit with language such as kind of as a rule or generally. You'll see in some places that, that we have language that will say, as a rule, the committee will do this, or generally speaking, this will happen. You know, you, you don't want the, the policies themselves watered down too much where everything has an exception, but at the same time, like one example would be into the communication section. There are several in here, you know, we'll generally communicate to the public through the chairperson. Sure, that's a general thing we want to do. We don't want, you know, seven different people going out and, and talking about every issue, but we didn't also necessarily want to say that it's somehow inappropriate for individual members to talk to members of the public, that there's some kind of gag order and that, you know, absolutely every communication of every kind has to go through the chair, and so there are similar aspects like that. So, we may not have gotten the balance right in every place, but that was one of the considerations thinking about, and we could have some discussion about. Have we struck a good balance between making sure that we've, you know, covered the general rules that we want to abide by without feeling that we're in a straitjacket, like if someone wants to just, you know, ask a simple question of someone in the district, and, oh, but wait, the policy says that everything should go through the chair, and then to the superintendent, and we don't want to make it harder to get a simple answer to a question than maybe it needs to be, but that was kind of where we were coming from in, in drafting these.
Mrs. Burns?
I think, I've got a bunch of notes pertaining to that, and I'm sorry, I just typed them up this afternoon. It works. I, I was hoping to get them up to you just for familiarization, but I think the other aspect that, when you're looking at this, first of all, thank you very much, because I think it's a very strong skeleton, and I think in part, the spirit and the elements are, I, I like, and I, you know what I mean? It's, it's befitting, but there was a couple of things that one needs to take into consideration, that some of the aspects that you touch upon is strictly the role of the chair and, and not a consideration of the board. Certain things like that in certain areas, and in other areas, I think it's just how it's written, because what, as the chair evolves and moves to different, different people, different personalities, different leadership, you want to make sure it's, it's flexible to that, to whomever's, you know, sitting in that position as well, and I think that's something, just to, more of a, just to be-
Yeah. So, I wonder if we shouldn't, one, if you want to just point us to the one in particular topic, or if we just want to go through them each, and if anyone has any edits?
Group it, yeah.
We can do that. Does that make sense? Do you want to, do you want to spend the time doing that, however the committee would like to handle? I guess so. I mean, if we look at, if we started roles, sorry, there's four bullets here. Does anyone have any concerns with the wording, the questions?
On the third bullet, the second's, only the school committee as a whole has authority to make decisions. I was thinking about maybe making decisions or something, trying to, the, the other aspect, individual members do not have authority acting alone and will not represent themselves as speaking or acting for the committee. I was wondering if there was a, a way we could, I like that piece just for clarification, that individually you can't speak for, unless you're the chair for the, you know, for the board, unless the chair, you know, unless the chair allows that, because it's really the, it's a role of the chair. Do you know what I mean?
It does say that, doesn't it?
So, we're looking at the third bullet.
Individual members, right.
Only the school committee as a whole has authority to make decisions. We, if you want to add those words, individual members do not have authority acting alone and will not represent themselves as speaking or acting for the committee unless empowered to do so.
And the chair would be the one empowered to do so.
The chair on behalf of the school committee would be, but I suppose it-
I think that empowered to do so is generally understood to mean the chair, but could mean someone else if that responsibility is delegated to another member.
Agreed.
For a reason, so if someone else is the chair of a different committee, right, I mean, so that I think it would-
Oh, that's- Or the co-chair, if the chair was-
Sure, right.
Not available.
Right, but the, I, I think the idea is to, having the language, unless empowered to do so, keeps it broad enough that different people, under different circumstances, could be, could be that person.
But knowing that when we are speaking, we're speaking for the committee, because the committee has empowered us to do that, that we're not saying, on behalf of this group, and here's what I say, again, on behalf, this is what we've decided, and I'm just the one delivering that information. Anybody else have anything in roles that you want to point out or have us change? And this is a complete draft. We just, we went through, we made, we flipped things around or the order, but we meant for it, for you to sort of say, I don't like this here, I want to move this around, and so is there anything in roles you want us to change that you don't feel represents us?
Is there anything missing here that maybe we should add? Hard to see what's not there, but something to think about.
I thought one thing under roles, something to the effect that the school committee will not involve itself in the day-to-day operations of the district, just to define that superintendent, school committee. There's two halves.
There is.
The second bullet, the second bullet kind of covers that.
That kind of covers that. Okay, great. Thank you.
Do you think, so the superintendent's responsible for day-to-day, and will manage the schools and staff?
I think that's also reinforced by the last bullet under the communication section, saying that complaints about staff members will be directed to the superintendent. Members will not sort of interfere in that area.
Under the, under communication, under the first bullet, so the school committee will generally communicate to the public through the chairperson. Media inquiries will also be forwarded to the chairperson. I just thought maybe remove also. Media inquiries will be forwarded to the chairperson, like always that will happen, and so I thought we could just take out the word also.
Well-
I think there are certain, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a hint?
No, but when you speak, just a student.
I think there are, there are certain circumstances where individuals may, may want to speak to the media, not on behalf of the school committee, but as individual members, and I think that should probably be included around election time or whatever.
Sure, yeah, that's an important distinction. Do you, so adding in, the school committee will generally communicate to the public through the chairperson.
Media inquiries involving the school committee as a whole will be forwarded to the chair.
Or that require a response on behalf of the committee itself. That's the, kind of the idea.
Anything else? Under communication? Mrs. Burns?
The second bullet, I am not very partial to the second sentence. I think it's important that, I, I like the protocol that we do have where any questions, it'd be in addressed to the superintendent, that the chair CCs so that the chair is informed, and I think it, it also lends itself to building a rapport and a relationship with the superintendent, and I, I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't forego my right to do that, or, you know, or to build that rapport, especially for new members who are just trying to get the lay of the land, per se. I mean, I think that's in that role. Maybe the chair would be helpful in a guidance piece with questions, but I certainly wouldn't want to limit the ability or access of the-
So, maybe the word channel is not correct there? I mean, I think what we've, and what we've done, which I'm assuming it seems to work, is the chair is CC'd so that the chair has a, sort of that bird's eye, they know what's happening among, but isn't one, isn't necessarily the one to respond, right? So, if you write something to the superintendent, but you CC the chair.
Right.
And the superintendent will still respond to that. So, I think that's sort of, so I guess the word channel sort of makes it seem like we're sending it to the chair, and the chair's getting the information.
And the chair makes a determination as to whether or not it should go forth or not. Yeah, that's how I think I perceive it.
No, I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I think some of this comes down to a practical issue of how often are requesting and questioning- and questions coming in, because sometimes it's easier to get them in one group, like, "Here are questions that we have for this week," and "Here are a couple of things." But if that's not practically something that is over burdensome, then, I mean, again, the whole point here is to make sure that we're acting in a way where we're not firing off too many questions.
Communication is always a two-way street, right? So I think in that realm, and I'm always privy for correction, if, you know, Superintendent Brand made that, be a part of that discussion, you know, even if it's, I'm not going to be able to respond to you today, but I will get back to you first thing, just, you know what I mean? I think you're a part of that, what, that flow piece, and in developing what, the best way, you've got seven people, I mean, it's kind of part of the job description. But I don't know, if that's what, I'm just throwing that out there as a thought, direction.
Okay, so I mean, we could change it to something as, well, you know, CC will copy the chairperson on any communications.
To the superintendent.
To the superintendent, to make sure that everyone is, you know, properly informed and so forth. We workshop that.
Is there a, it may, there may be another example if you wanted to look at in our handbook, in that, I think it's a part of our handbook too, that may be, may give an example of how that's written, that you might want to take from if it's, I can't recall exactly, unfortunately.
That, by the way, is an example of what I was mentioning before, of having language, like as a rule, to try not put handcuffs on people to do it, while also encouraging the general principle, but I can work on that.
Anything else under communication? Good. Okay, so then open meeting law and executive session.
For the first, first, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
For the first bullet, what are your thoughts about adding or quorum to it, or like formulating that sentence to, or the appearance of a quorum?
It's built into open meeting law, though.
It is.
Are you saying we need to be more clear about that?
Well, I just, I just didn't, I didn't know if the public were to look at our operating protocols or if a new member, I was just, I mean, it was just a thought, I just wanted to get an opinion.
So I know this is, this is detailed in that, in the open law. I'm sorry, I'm fumbling for words tonight. This is detailed somewhere, how's that? That, especially in small towns, a quorum may, may occur at public events. We can't, we can't necessarily avoid that, as long as we're not deliberating.
Right, right.
That is not a problem.
And that's kind of, I think that's what kind of, when I read it, that's what I, why I was kind of, I was more curious, because it said, "Open meeting law at all times and refrain from deliberating outside of properly posted public meetings," and sort of like, if you're posting, I guess my thought was, if you need to say, "You can't deliberate outside of public meeting," well, maybe it is a kind of a quiet thing, that deliberating would constitute a quorum, correct?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Am I good?
Okay.
And then the last section, meetings. Any suggested edits or concerns here? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In the first bullet, the second sentence, I would like to offer a possible rephrase of that, of that, to state, except in rare circumstances, items not on the agenda that are raised spontaneously, will not be discussed, but will be put on a future agenda, or something close to that, because I think a lot of times future agenda items do come up on spontaneous discussions at times.
That's what stickies are for, pretending some kind of agenda, to remind me to add it to a future agenda.
The other aspect is the second bullet, and again, it may be my, how I, when I read it, my interpretation, but the agenda and its creation are the responsibility of the superintendent, chair, and vice chair to create, and it's really not the board overall. I'm sorry, agendas will be guided by established goals and priorities. I mean, that's really driven by the superintendent, chair, and assistant, the vice chair, so I wasn't sure it's placed there. And then the third one with regards to public comments, again, since it is a public meeting, that public comments are really at the discretion of the chair, and I think at that juncture, it's the, you know, we all would like to encourage participation, but I wouldn't want it to supersede the chair's ability that if they so chose not to have, hold a public comment area, a section of our meetings, that they have that authority to do so. But I, again, I just offer these as a possible suggestion.
Actually, on that same bullet point, number four, school committee meetings are held in public but are not public meetings? Actually, they are, that's exactly what they are, is public meetings. What they are not is public hearings.
Hearings, thank you.
So we might want to just change that. And public hearings, obviously, the public is invited to speak, yeah.
What's the one time a year we have a public hearing?
Budget.
Budget?
On the calendar.
February 13th, 2019. Come one, come all.
And should I add, at the discretion of the chair at the end of that? Is everyone okay with that?
Did we do that? I mean, have we ever been so overwhelmed by public comment that we've had to live?
I don't know, I think tonight might be one of those nights.
I know, we include that not by law, but by the discretion of the chair.
So include it.
So I don't know that we need to include it.
Don't include it, all right.
And the law could change. There's some stuff out there.
Anything else?
I'm so sorry.
Are you sure?
Yeah, okay. Those are the three elements. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll rework this.
Tweak these just a little bit.
Tweak it, and then we'll, we should probably just maybe do one more, one more read-through of this, and then, and then maybe the next, not the next meeting, the meeting after that we can find it.
Okay.
Our hope.
So see, I'm adding it to the sticky.
I think that was a very, very well thought out document, though. Kudos to you guys for doing that.
Absolutely. The only thing that I was going to just tag on to this, we had had a couple of discussions, our thoughts about future workshops, because I think we were all in agreement that the last one we had was very helpful, there were a couple of areas that we didn't get to, one being goal setting, and that being our goals as a committee, that would probably tag off to Dr. Brand's goals that he's going to talk about next. We also had talked about superintendent evaluation process. I did check in with Dorothy Presser, the month of September is not so great for her, but October is pretty good, and when I was looking at how we had done this in the past, the goal setting we did as a separate workshop, it doesn't mean we have to do it that way. The superintendent evaluation process, they actually did a presentation for us at a regular meeting. So we have a couple of options there, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but just sort of, at some point, let's, let's talk about dates and how we want to handle that. Okay, but know that it's coming, I didn't forget about it, I talked to Dorothy, it's definitely on my radar. You good? Okay. All right, so our next agenda item is a first reading of Superintendent Brand's goals.
Thank you. This really is just here for continuation of the conversation around the goals that I presented to you last time. At that point in time, considered draft, and very much so, in the spirit of trying to gather any thoughts or feedback or suggestions that you might have. At the present time, you'll recall, there are three goals that I propose. Again, this is for, an important basis of your evaluation of my performance in terms of this goal, this goal piece specifically. And the three goals, just very quickly, I know it is late, but completion of superintendent's entry plan, which hopefully you'll recall, included a number of different aspects, data collection, pulling together a report that would provide recommendations to you based upon, you know, my, my report of findings over the, over the number of months that will take place, and that timeline is looking to share a report with you around mid-November. The second goal was really a reiteration, very much the spirit of the coordinated program review. Again, this, this goal is here because I don't believe as your superintendent that this falls just to Alice and her team in Student Services, but this very much pertains to the entire district, and so as an aspect of my work and working to support that department and all of our leaders throughout the district, to ensure that the work that's contained within that as part of our marching orders, if you will, is seen to and is accomplished. And then the third goal is strategic plan. You'll recall the effort to realize where we are as a district right now, and that is having a strategic plan that recently came to an end at the end of last school year. It is definitely time, not just because you have a new superintendent, but because we need a new strategic plan. And so the proposal is that by the end of this school year, we will be in a place to have a new strategic plan that will chart our course and identify our priorities going forward. So those are the three goals at this point in time, and again, happy to take any thoughts or suggestions in terms of what you might like to see considered changed or tweaked or adjusted.
Mrs. Burns, I think you were absent when Dr. Brand first presented them. Anything that came to mind for you?
I actually did my homework, because it was an important meeting that I missed. I did share some questions with Dr. Brand as follow-up, once I reviewed the last meeting from the 29th, and I, and I guess my, one of the biggest things, and I appreciated the feedback, is in creating our strategic plan, how we budget for, I guess I've got budget planning on the mind, starting early, trained me well, but how do we budget appropriately in that process, since the budget for next year's already been a step, the budget this year will be, I mean, will be, it took me a minute to wrap my head around it. If you can help me out, Dr. Brand. Would you please?
I may.
Because I'm not going to be able to say.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your question was specific to any new endeavors that might be budget-related that come out of the strategic plan. How would we budget for those in the 2000, what would be the 2020 budget, FY20? And it's a very important and a fair question. My response was that I think that unfortunately, the reality is the timelines here just don't mesh, they don't align, and that is something that we have to contend with. And that is to say that if I'm successful in the realization of this goal, this goal will, may very well identify things that may have a connection with a budgetary requirement. The fact of the matter is that the FY20 budget will already have been established, will already been approved, and so there's, there's obviously a lack of an alignment there. And so budgetary-driven things are, unless there's enough clarity and foresight around hitting the budget time period that may happen through the entry plan or, and the data report, that might be one thing, but to be very true to the budgeting process, we'll have, we could certainly have more of an expanded conversation as that unfolds, but I don't see it quite possible to identify or setting aside or earmarking certain budgets, a budget allocation for what's not known yet in terms of the plan. So, did I, did I hit that right?
You did, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right.
Any questions or comments? So I think we have two options at this point, so presenting the superintendent goals are kind of step one of the superintendent evaluation process. And Dr. Brand shared these with us in draft form, he brought them forward to us again this evening, with the intention of it being kind of a first reading, similar to what we've done with policies. If the committee felt that we were ready to make a motion and take a vote to accept those goals this evening, we could do that. The other option, if folks wanted a little bit more time to think about it, that's acceptable. Also, we can add it to the agenda for our next meeting on the 26th, with the intention to take a vote whether or not to accept those goals at that point. Any feedback? Mrs. Burns.
No, 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 please. Uh-uh. I was just gonna, I was just gonna fill a void, go.
I mean, I feel as though I've looked at them and we've talked about it, I'm, I'm ready to, to move ahead with, with it, but I, other people want just one more time to read it, I'm comfortable with that as well. Is that what you're gonna say?
That's pretty much exactly what I was gonna say. But especially since, I mean, the sooner we get these approved, the better.
The sooner we can get them. Exactly, we can start the work.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
All right. Would somebody like to offer a motion to approve and accept the goals that Dr. Brand has shared with us?
I would offer that motion.
A second.
Okay, we've got a second. All those in favor? That looks like that's unanimous. I would say that we were ready. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much.
All righty, public comments. No public comment, okay. Subcommittee reports. Mrs. Burns.
I have one. Wanted to report back with, with regards to the Joanne Auditorium Dedication Planning Committee. We've had two very productive meetings, and our next one is actually scheduled for this Monday. I just want to share with the board that members of the committee include Assistant Superintendent Paul Ruggiero, Jackie Rafi, High School Principal Linda Peters, Ms. Bjork, Director of Public Buildings George Hooper, Director of the High School Music Program, Barbara Metti, and former Town Manager Mike Keir, along with former school committee member Peggy Kane. We currently have a tentative date for the event, we're just firming up schedules, ensuring that what we have will actually work, and once we do, we will certainly notify the board, as along with the public, to that date, so everyone can save it. Since everything is really currently in the planning stages, what I can really share is that, and I can tell you, Paul will be the host and emcee, so everyone, you can't miss that one. We've got him on a roll now, we give the guy a mic, and now he's hosting events for us. But we will have a handful of speakers, along with multiple performances, that really showcase all of our performing arts, you know, with, that we, the program that we offer here at the high school. So I do anticipate, since what we're planning is a matter of, we're hoping to shoot for the fall, it's in a, you know, a short timeframe, that we, the committee will have its work cut out for, for it, but I do have to say, it's really shaping up to be a wonderful event with, with everything. So Paul or Steve, would you, would you like to, could I add anything to this? I offer you the floor.
I think you detailed it pretty comprehensively, and.
Steve Bjork arrived at 10:01, prepared with a pen. Just kidding, Steve's invited, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I'm sorry, did I miss the time of date?
We're not, we're not announcing it.
We're gonna firm that up.
Yeah, no, that's okay. But I assure you, you'll be one of the first, you'll be one of the first to know.
Okay, any other subcommittee reports?
The negotiating team for the educational assistance will be starting up again soon, and we will hope to bring that to a satisfactory and quick, conclusion. But we're, we're scheduling the, after taking the summer off, we'll be getting started on that again.
Great.
Very soon.
Okay. Anything else? No? Correspondence?
None.
Okay. I have two items to share that has been kind of sent to us, not just in print correspondence form. First of all, we have been notified that unfortunately, our student rep, Joe Wilson, is unable to continue in the role. He's got a lot of commitments. So Mrs. Peters is, is working on lining up a replacement for us. Traditionally, it's always been a junior or senior high school student, so we'll look forward to our next person. And I have to say, Joe Wilson was fabulous, so if we can clone him.
Yeah, we'll miss Joe.
Yeah, we will miss Joe. We expect him to do well in life, so thank you to Joe, we appreciated him. And also, I am very pleased to announce that our former member, Mrs. Peggy Kane, will be honored with MASC's Lifetime Achievement Award at their upcoming conference in November. This award will be given to her at a dinner reception, and it will be on Thursday, November 8. 8th. So that's a pretty big deal, and we're pretty excited for her. I say a big thank you to Mrs. Bryson for pulling together the nomination materials and the letters from community members, because it's a pretty big deal and it was a lot of work. So thank you for that. And that's all I have. Anything else for correspondence? I think we're good. I think that means we have one more item of business. Would anyone like to offer a motion to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn.
Mr. Ragsdale, Mrs. Burns seconded. All those in favor? Thank you very much, folks.